Add in the Delhi Record on January 12, 2025, and the Hanover Eagle, January 16, 2025. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please. Mr. Marzano?
Here.
Mrs. Egbert? Mrs. Johnston?
Here.
Mr. Skiff?
Here.
Mr. Madasich?
Here.
Mr. McCabe?
Here.
Mrs. Striciola?
Here.
Mrs. Coffey?
Here.
And Mrs. BoMango?
Here. Thank you. Tonight, we have three special presentations, and we are going to begin with the district testing report, which will be delivered tonight by Mr. Wasserman.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you. And I want to just thank Mr. Toomey and the members of the Board of Education and the public for the opportunity to present this evening's report on our district testing report. I'll be providing an overview of the district standardized testing results. And the purpose of this presentation is to share how our students performed across state and district assessments and how this data is used to guide instruction, program development, and placement decisions. The full testing report will be available on the district website within the next day or so for anyone wishing to review it in greater detail. The InView assessment is our first assessment that I would like to just speak to a little bit. The InView assessment is administered to students in grades three and six, and both grades will complete this test in January. The assessment is administered digitally and measures students' innate ability to reason and problem solve. It's not a test of content knowledge, but of cognitive ability. The assessment includes five areas: sequences, which is identifying patterns; analogies, which is recognizing relationships between words and images; quantitative reasoning, which is analyzing numbers or quantities; verbal reasoning, which is word relationships; and verbal reasoning, which is context and sentence meaning. These results are used as part of our criteria to help support placement decisions and initiate interventions. And you'll see the scores of grade three and six over time, and they, for the most part, remain consistent. Next slide. The next assessment that I'd like to talk to the public about this evening is the WIDA assessment, and it is administered annually to all students identified as multilingual learners. It measures English language proficiency in four key areas: listening, speaking, reading, and writing. WIDA results help us monitor students' progress toward English language proficiency and guide instruction supports within our multilingual programs. Students' proficiency levels vary depending on exposure, and there is no set timeline on how quickly a student may move through these proficiency levels. And if you see, we have, I believe, 41 students who took this assessment, if you go to the next slide, last year, you'll see most of our students are in the entering or emerging and developing criteria. We, I think, if you see where we're at with bridging and reaching, which is the higher levels, we only had about three students reach those levels. And again, this is an assessment that really is dependent on the exposure to the English language. And as the child gets more comfortable with the English language, they move through the assessment and these proficiency levels. Okay, so the next few slides we're going to talk about is understanding the NJSLA data. The NJSLA, or the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, provides a snapshot of student performance in English, Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science. It's important to remember that these assessments measure only a portion of grade level standards. They are not a complete indicator of a student's overall academic ability, creativity, or success. And that's important. I just want to restate that. They are not a complete indicator of a student's overall academic ability, creativity, or student success. Not all students receive the same test questions, and the number of questions per standard can vary. So because of our relatively small class sizes, even one or two students can significantly affect the percentage points of proficiency. The NJSLA is designed to track growth for the same group of students over time rather than comparing different groups year to year. It's also worth noting that science uses four proficiency levels instead of five. Last year marks the last year-- this, I should say, last year's assessment will mark the last year that the NJSLA, which was contracted through Pearson, will be administered. Educators were notified in the beginning of the school year that Cambium Assessment Incorporated is the new provider for this adaptive version of the New Jersey statewide assessment. This new assessment will be called the NJSLA Adaptive. This transition involves a new platform managed by Cambium, and the mandatory administration of field tests will be taking place in the month of November. So if you take a look, here are our performance levels. Obviously, on ELA and math, you see for grades three through eight, you have levels one through five. And I just explained that in science, which is taken in only two grades, you have one, two, three, and four. Next slide. Okay, so on this slide, you'll see the NJSLA ELA results. I know it's a little bit difficult to see. The board does have these packets and copies of the presentation in front of them. And again, this will be made public on our website in the next day or so. So we have the NJSLA results here in Language Arts, and these show grades three through eight, including all grades on the left. What you'll see is the levels of proficiency: level one, two, three, four, and five, going across with 2025 being on the right. And for most things that we tend to look at with the NJSLA, you're looking at the last two levels of proficiency. Typically, a district will look at how many students are meeting and how many students are exceeding. Here's a graph form of the slide that we just looked at. Obviously, you want to see green, yellow, dark green more than you see the red and the orange. Okay, here is an NJSLA three-year comparison. And if you take a look at the-- excuse me, if you take a look at the-- the first column is district, then state, and then the percent above or below state average. Typically, what we like to do is we like to think of the assessment as a K through eight-- I should say, a three-through-eight continuum. So it's really where do our children fall at the conclusion of grade eight? Because that's when they're graduating from our district. So obviously, we're tracking the growth, and we're looking at the scores every single year. They're as important to us as the next. But the eighth grade is really where that culminating experience, when they go to the high school, that's when they leave our district. So if you kind of look at-- I don't know if we could make it a little smaller just so we can see. 2025 is all the way on the right. And you'll see that, for example, in grade eight for ELA, 74.3% of our students in district were meeting or exceeding expectations in ELA. At a state level, 57.1 students meet or exceed. So we're well above that, 17% above that in our district, which is something to be proud of and to celebrate. We'll now look at the math scores. And again, they will all be laid out by proficiency levels and by year, so you could make some comparisons to those. And again, what we'd like to tend to look at is our combined eighth-grade scores. So if you look at, again, our graph or our visual, which is a little easier than reading the chart, you want to, again, see the red as small as possible, which we see, you know, pockets maybe of red or orange. But the majority of our graphs are in the green, light green, yellow, and that's where we want to be. And again, a three-year comparison. Now, you'll notice that in the math performance, overall, students continue to perform above state averages. A few points to note here are that grade eight data shown here represents non-algebra students. So if you look at grade eight and you see that number, in grade eight, some of our eighth-grade students take another assessment, which is the Algebra I assessment. So when you do a combined of the students that take Algebra I and grade eight, you'll see on the very bottom line a combined grade eight proficiency. And I can't read that number. It's far from me, but it's around 61%. Okay, so 61%. And when you look at just grade eight, you'll see at the state level, we're looking at about 28% of grade eight students being proficient at the state level. But in our district, we're looking well over 40%. And then when you combine that with the algebra, well over 61%. And I can say that we've made some significant strides with our mathematics this year. Our ELA stayed mostly flat overall in terms of our overall growth, but our mathematics grew significantly. And we put a lot of work around leveling children up in mathematics, and we're now doing the same with ELA as well. The next slide will show the district's performance in science. Once again, we focus on four and five-- levels four and five, I should say. And we also note growth in the combined percentage of students performing at grades-- in grades at levels three and four. Our students consistently perform above state averages, demonstrating progress in scientific reasoning, analysis, and inquiry skills. This is a particularly rigorous assessment, requiring students to apply their understanding of scientific concepts in complex ways. And you'll notice that although the percentages are low here on a state level, all around the state, they are very low as well, which speaks to the assessment. And it also-- I just want to note that our eighth-grade scores did jump significantly last year, and we're really pleased to see that growth there. And here again, you'll see a visual model of that. And this is what I was alluding to with the state averages, the district averages, and how far above we are from the state. Okay. The next slides are going to be about subgroup performance. So for the next several slides, we're going to highlight subgroup performance, including student demographics and program-based results. I'll move through these slides relatively quickly, noting areas of particular success and improvement. But this information helps us identify where additional supports may be needed to ensure all student groups are making meaningful progress. If you scroll through a little bit, this is subgroup by race. Subgroup by gender. This is subgroup by program. And you'll see that some of these programs that are singled out include General Ed on the right. Special Ed is-- on the far right is General Ed. Special Ed is to the left of that. Section 504, free and reduced lunch, and then our multilingual learners, or ELL, learners. And what I just want to note on our subgroups is that-- and I have my director of special services here, Mrs. Sherry Copan. Our special education population and our general education population, as well as our 504 population, are doing very well. Where we saw some needs of improvement are in our economically disadvantaged students. And sometimes, that population tends to be a little bit transient. So sometimes, it's a little bit harder to nail down. However, we're working hard with that population, and we're putting resources there to assist that population, as well as our multilingual learners. Sometimes, students are coming into the district with other languages and are still required to assess. And depending on where they're coming from and what schools they've attended has an impact on that. So both populations-- all populations, we're trying to do our best to try to increase the meeting and exceeding groups. But those two highlights this year are specific to what we're focusing on. Great. Our last assessment for the NJSLA is called the DLM assessment. And there is no report for this year on the Dynamic Learning Maps or DLM assessment because fewer than 10 students participated in this. And the state does not publish results to protect student confidentiality. Essentially, this assessment is administered for students with significant cognitive disabilities. And it's more of a portfolio type of an assessment. And at this point, we didn't have any results to report out on. Okay, so this is our moving forward slide, and it summarizes several key points from tonight's report and previews what's ahead for state testing. So our focus for this year centers on strengthening academic programs and ensuring consistency and alignment across all schools. To begin, we are expanding our K3 diagnostic reading screeners using M-Class Dibble's eighth edition to identify early literacy needs and provide timely interventions. This universal screener process allows teachers to use real-time data to target foundational reading skills and ensure every child develops a strong literacy base. We are also delivering professional learning for teachers in grades three to five to support the consistent implementation of our core reading materials, including read-alouts and guided reading. This work will help strengthen our instructional coherence and ensure that literacy practices are aligned across classrooms and schools. At the middle school level, the Memorial Junior School Master Schedule Committee-- and I see Mr. Anderson in the audience here this evening. He is leading that charge with his team there-- they are continuing to explore best practices that maximize instructional time and provide opportunities for both enrichment and intervention. Recommendations from this work will guide schedule refinements for future implementation. So more to come on the Memorial Junior School Master Scheduling Committee. In addition, we are launching a strategic planning process. We've already had our first meeting. And in partnership with TMI Education, who is leading the community through this process, our meeting focused on engaging staff, parents, and community members in developing a shared vision for the district. It's going to also yield a five-year actionable plan that sets clear goals and priorities for the future. We also continue to strengthen our multi-tiered systems of support, ensuring that all students receive the right level of academic and behavioral support. Through the continued use of leveled literacy intervention and our SUNDAY program, we are delivering targeted reading support to students in need while monitoring progress closely. And to further promote inclusion, we adjusted K5 schedules to support a more inclusive instructional model, one that allows for collaborative teaching and equitable access to both core instruction and interventions. Additionally, we are deepening articulation with neighboring districts, including the Hanover Park Regional High School District, to align curriculum expectations and ensure smooth transitions for our students as they move to high school. And finally, as I mentioned, the New Jersey Department of Education is preparing to roll out updates to the NJSLA, which include an infrastructure trial, which we just completed, a field test, which is going to be taking place on November 12, 13, and 14, and this adaptive version of the spring assessment, which we're all so excited and can't wait to see, although the teachers and-- we can't really look at the assessment. We're just so excited for this assessment. At this time, there are no changes planned for science. They're going to be keeping the same science assessment using the old NJSLA model. But we anticipate future updates as a state transitions into this new testing platform. This new adaptive format should provide-- or we are told will provide more precise insights into student performance and growth, allowing us to refine instruction even further. And together, these initiatives reflect our district's collective commitment to excellence by using data, collaboration, and innovation to ensure that every student is supported, challenged, and prepared for future success. The final content slide shows our district testing schedule. General testing windows are available on the district testing website, while specific dates for each NJSLA subject area are posted on the district calendar. We aim to keep this information transparent and easily accessible for families. And that concludes the district testing report presentation. I want to thank you for your continued support of our students, our teachers, and our instructional programs. And at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions from the board or members of the public.
Yeah, Mr. Wasserman?
Yes, Mr. McCabe.
How long has the state required you to report test results for race and gender? And how does the state use that data?
I don't know-- I don't have an answer on how long we've had to report. It's been some years now where we've had to report those out. But yeah, we are held accountable for making sure that each of the groups, the subgroups, are growing as well. So those are things that we tend to try to refine and hone in on to make sure that-- whether it be any-- regardless of the subgroup, that they are also making and showing growth. Okay, thank you. Yes. The WIDA, yes. Yes. It's-- we've had some years where it's been a little bit more or less. But for the most part, we're pretty standard on that. It's been pretty consistent for the most part. And I base that on the way we are delivering our services to those children and the needs that we have, you know, to make sure that we have enough teachers for those students. And right now, we're able to accommodate that.
Got a question. How is it that algebra is charting so well compared to everything else?
Those students are in the advanced track, and we have a very-- and I just want to tip a hat to our algebra-- eighth-grade algebra teacher, Mrs. Dietrich. She's a very gifted teacher, and her scores are tremendously skewed high. And we thank her for all her work, so.
Pass that along. She's doing excellent job.
Absolutely. 14 years, I just heard. 14 years, Mr. McCabe. For how long they've been collecting that?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
We're going to move on to our HIB grade report with Mr. Anderson.
Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to share this year's results from our Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act self-assessment. I'm Michael Anderson, principal here at Memorial Junior School, but I also wear the hat of being the district anti-bullying coordinator. And tonight, I'm proud to highlight how our schools continue to foster safe and positive, inclusive environments for every student. Each year, every school in New Jersey completes a self-assessment to measure how well we're preventing and addressing harassment, intimidation, and bullying, or HIB. Now, this just isn't about compliance or paperwork. It's really an opportunity for schools to reflect, to look at what's working, where we can improve, and how we can continue to strengthen our culture of respect and kindness. Each school's anti-bullying specialist leads this process. And the results I'm sharing tonight reflect our district's performance during the 2024 and 25 school year. The assessment looks at eight core elements, each representing a different part of a school's prevention and response system. Here's a quick overview. So if we start on the top, HIB programs and initiatives. Basically, they're measuring or looking at the proactive programs and campaigns that promote kindness, empathy, and conclusion. And as we move around to some of the other areas here, staff instruction and training is ensuring that all staff, not just teachers, know how to recognize and respond to HIB. Training on the HIB policy itself. We all have annual training as a staff on the law in our district procedures. In terms of curriculum and instruction, that's really how we teach students about respect, empathy, and conflict resolution through daily lessons. Our HIB personnel, it's our team structure, anti-bullying specialists, school safety teams, and my role as district coordinator. We have incident reporting procedures. It's essentially how accessible and clear it is for our students, staff, and parents to report a concern. The investigation process itself, how fairly and consistently schools investigate cases within the required timelines. And last but not least, the HIB reporting, how outcomes are shared with families, the district, and the state for transparency. All of these items are scored on a scale of zero to three, with a three meaning the school exceeds state expectations. A perfect score is a 78, and the minimum passing score is a 50. So on this next slide, I'm very pleased to share that our schools continue to perform exceptionally well, and our scores have remained remarkably consistent from year to year. You can see where we're at. Each of our schools earned a score of 76 possible out of 78 points. That consistency is not an accident. When the HIB law was first created and later updated, our district took it seriously right from the start. We built strong systems to support students, provided thorough training for staff, and made sure every stakeholder understood their role. Because of that early work, our prevention and response efforts have stayed steady and effective. We do an excellent job of educating students on how to treat one another with kindness and respect. And that proactive approach helps prevent many issues before they start. Of course, bullying can still happen and does happen from time to time. But what makes us proud is how we respond when it does. Our approach is not only corrective, it is educational. We help students reflect on their behavior, understand its impact, and learn to make better choices moving forward. Those educational follow-ups make a real difference in preventing future incidents. And that's the heart of our program: teaching, not just reacting. So beyond the scores, several areas continue to stand out district-wide. The first area is on curriculum and instruction on HIB. We do this in a number of ways, but each school celebrates the Week of Respect very early in the school year, in the first week in October, and it sets a positive tone early every school year. We also have character education programs that are well-established in all of our schools, and they are woven into the character education-- you know, lessons and pillars are woven into daily routines. And they're not just a one-time event, but they're part of who we are. And our partnerships with community organizations extend that message beyond the classroom. We also do a nice job training the staff and students. All employees, volunteers, receive annual HIB trainings. And our students participate in assemblies within the first week or two of the school year, where they also take a quiz to, again, make sure that they understand what HIB is all about. Another way that we are, you know, sort of displaying our strengths is through the investigation and reporting procedures. Our schools meet every state requirement for timely and thorough investigations, and our process remains consistent, transparent, and fair for all students. Now, on these next few slides, I want to share some highlights of, really, our programs, the things that our schools do in, you know, sort of a collective effort in addressing HIB. So at the heart of our success is the time, energy, and dedication that all of our students invest in creating a positive, supportive climate and culture. A cornerstone of these efforts is our Week of Respect and our ongoing character education program, as I mentioned. The next few slides highlight the variety of programs we offer and how they contribute to making our schools even stronger places to learn and grow. Most importantly, our Week of Respect and character education programs showcase our students' leadership, creativity, and commitment to community. At the middle school, we have seen remarkable student-driven initiatives from leading kindness campaigns and designing positive message walls to mentoring younger peers. campaigns and designing positive message walls to mentoring younger peers. And then in our elementary school, students actively engage in learning what it means to be terrific, in teacher's guide lessons that teach empathy, friendship, and problem-solving in ways that are both fun and meaningful. And across all of our schools, our community partnerships, including collaborations with local organizations, businesses, Barclays, and law enforcement with our DARE program, continue to strengthen our prevention efforts and reinforce that creating a safe, respectful environment is a shared, community-wide commitment. So as we continue on, and we look forward to moving into this current school year, which is well underway, our focus will remain on keeping that positive momentum going. We plan to continue expanding our character education initiatives and, you know, our schools are in the process of getting Character Ed kicked off for the year and revamping some of the programs and bolstering what we're offering. But we also want to make sure that we're involving our parents through presentations and other things that help parents to reinforce our ideas together at home. So with our scores, as we, you know, reach the end of our presentation, once, once approved by the board, our scores will be submitted to the New Jersey Department of Education and will be posted on our district website. So in closing, before I wrap up, I do want to take a moment to recognize the people that make this work possible. Our anti-bullying specialists, our counselors that are in each of our schools, our administrators, teachers, and support staff are all a vital part of our success. Their consistency, compassion, professionalism are why we remain, why our schools, excuse me, remain safe, supportive places where our students feel valued and cared for. So again, thank you for your continued sport, support of this important work. And at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions from the board.
What is Core Element One?
Yeah, Core Element One is the HIB programs and initiatives. Yeah, as we go around the.
Yeah, where does it start?
Top.
It starts at HIB personnel.
Did I miss that, I'm sorry.
That's my question as well. So Core Element One is HIB.
The programs, approaches, and initiatives?
Yes.
And then go clockwise around would be Core Two, Core Three, Core Four.
Okay, so three, three is HIB personnel?
Yes, yep, 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 you're right. I'm sorry, yes, it's going counterclockwise there, so.
Got it, thank you.
So it really is a blend of all those eight things, you know, again, really not a specific, you know, order, I mean, they are numbered, yes, but again, it's just the, you know, graphic there is just showing that they're all part of this, you know, well, sort of developed approach, a well-rounded approach.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Do the HIB coordinator, there's a HIB coordinator for the entire district?
So yes, I'm approved, and I know Mr. Wasserman was also added on this last year as we did our reorganization meeting. So Mr. Wasserman and I shared the district anti-bullying coordinator role, and then at each of our schools, the counselors, the school counselors are the anti-bullying specialists. So if there is an instance of HIB reported, the counselors are the investigators.
Understood.
Yep.
Okay, and do you think that the district as a whole would benefit from the board's cultivation and creation of forms, things that can assist to keep the, these investigations and the analysis that's done to either confirm or, or not confirm an HIB consistent throughout? Or do you have certain things that you're already using that you like? I mean, how, how is, how is it being handled?
Yeah, Mr. Skiff, that's a great question. So when the anti-bullying law came about, we went through the process of development, and I know, Mr. Wasserman, at that time, you were still working at, at Memorial Junior School. So we developed sort of homegrown forms for, you know, flowchart to keep the investigation on par with what the state's expectations are. We have looked into, there's a, a program called Hipster, that's a subscription program that schools around us do subscribe to. It's just an online version of what we do. We still kind of have the traditional paper forms, but, you know, so we've done a nice job of being consistent with it. We've shared our forms, other schools around us have also utilized our forms as kind of a guide. But again, we, we've been kind of contemplating, do we switch to an online program? But.
Understood. Yeah, I mean, I think it speaks for, I think the only appeal that I've ever had participated in was, I think, the first meeting I was ever at.
Right.
So I think that's a testament to, I mean, if, if, if we were getting a lot of appeals from parents or, or individuals, I think that would maybe indicate some lack of across-the-board consistency or fairness in, in how it's being applied.
Yeah.
Because I know from my experience with other districts that, for instance, we, as a board, made the conscious choice under the law to decide that we don't want there to be sort of a subjective initial determination that could prevent an investigation from happening. We'd rather have thirty non-confirmed HIBs than one investigation that's confirmed and a bunch that just were deemed sort of as an initial matter, a threshold matter, not worthy of the investigation. And I think that's part of the fairness that I'm talking about.
And, and, you know, and again, I know we've had that conversation before, and then maybe it was a question that's come up in the past, but no, I think even for us as building administrators, and then also the investigators themselves, appreciate the fact that the district isn't going to just say, well, this really isn't HIB, we're not going to take the time to look into it. We want to look into everything to just make sure that we're thorough and, and we go through the process. So it might require a few extra man-hours, but it's worth it just to make sure that we're getting things right, so, and taking the time to, to look into that. Because again, we want to make sure that everybody is heard as well.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Now, we're going to move on to our final special presentation with Mr. Toomey.
Thank you so much, Mrs. BoMango and the Board of Education. My name is Justin Toomey. I have the privilege of serving as the superintendent of schools, and for this presentation, I've also, I'm going to be tag-teaming with our fabulous director of special education, who also serves as our McKinny-Vento homeless liaison. Every district is required to have a homeless liaison to support and work with families who are experiencing various types of homelessness situations. And so, education is very important to us as an administrative team and a board, and so we felt we wanted to be able to just provide some insight. I know I've attended a multitude of trainings with as high as the state about the legislation, what the impact is for schools, how we're supporting families as we go through this, right? And, and obviously, we're all in this for the kids and for helping kids as much as we can. It is not a secret, or maybe it is a secret, but New Jersey, especially Morris County, has had a significant increase in homelessness in the, in the recent last couple of years, and that's something that I know has been, my last year as, my first year as superintendent, my first county meeting on the agenda was, you know, the homeless increase, and here we are in year two, and it's only continuing. And, and obviously, I'm not here to talk about the factors or why that's happening, it just, it is, that's the situation that we're in right now. So just to provide some education on what school districts are required to do as per the law, and then also some of the things that the district is doing, you know, and what we're experiencing. So we're first going to start with the overview. So the definition of homelessness, and, and just, you wonder why you're seeing the state of New Jersey seal there. That's because these are directly from a presentation, this part is from a presentation that is actually given by one of the state homeless liaisons. So these are, you know, their, their words essentially, and I wanted to try to make sure that the message was as clear as possible. So definition of, definition of homeless is students who lack a regular, fixed, and adequate nighttime residence, including students that are sheltered, which means living in emergency and transitional shelters, unsheltered, which are living in places not designated as regular sleeping accommodations, living in cars, campgrounds, public spaces, and abandoned buildings. And then we have hotel and motel, which is self-explanatory, living in a hotel or a motel, and what we call doubled up. And so the term doubled up means that they're sharing housing due to loss of housing or economic hardship. So those are the four areas within, you know, the definition of, of the categories, I should say, of homeless. So there's steps to the process that we're required to follow as a district. One thing that the district did, thanks to Mrs. Copan last year, is we added McKinny-Vento identification form to our registration process. So as a family is registering their children for school, we are able to have a form that is in there, and it's provided to every family. It's not just handed out, you know, to certain families that are able to fill it out, and that basically is a screener, right, to let us know that maybe there is some kind of challenging situation. And at that point, Mrs. Copan is then actually calling herself and having a conversation with that family to, to clarify, you know, are, are you homeless under the McKinny-Vento Act, or what's going on, right? And, and again, how can we support your children? So federally, right, so there's, you're going to see the next few slides as a federal, you know, code, and then the New Jersey administrative code. And so federally, each liaison shall ensure that homeless children and youths are identified by school personnel and through coordination activities with other entities and agencies. So in our district, our liaison is Mrs. Copan, so that is part of that process that I was just sharing. On the state level, a district board of education shall determine a child is homeless when they reside in any of the following, and then it goes through the different things that I just explained, public or private place not designated for regular sleeping accommodation, vehicle, tent, park, abandoned building, bus, train station, the residence of relatives or friends where the child resides out of necessity because their family lacks a permanent residence of its own substandard housing, right? Or substandard housing, I should say. So the whole idea is, the, the keyword is temporary, temporarily displaced, people that don't have a fixed nightly residence to, to stay in. As far as the enrollment goes, so federally, the school shall immediately enroll the homeless child or youth, even if the child or youth is unable to produce records normally required for enrollment. So the conversation is, you know, we basically, you know, get the information from them, Mrs. Copan speaks with them, they have to fill out our online registration form, right, just to be able to register like any parent would. And then as far as some of the documentation, you know, for instance, if you own a home in the town, we want a deed from the owner. If you rent a home in the town, we want to see a landlord affidavit and a deed. If you are coming in homeless, we need you to just fill out that McKinny-Vento screening form, and then we work through the other requirements. Obviously, we're still required to get immunizations and all of the things that we would normally be required to, you know, but as the code says, we are, we are supposed to immediately enroll them. It doesn't mean that if they call, email us tonight, they're in tomorrow, right? Because obviously, we still need to make sure that they're getting in. So it usually does take a few days, but we're not putting any barriers in their way of enrolling in our schools. As well, if, if a dispute arises over enrollment, the child shall be immediately admitted to the school in which enrollment is sought, you know, or pending, right? So if there is a dispute, and we'll talk a little bit about that in, in a few minutes, you know, while the dispute or the appeal process is playing out, we still have to, and we have to educate them here. And I think the, the impetus behind that is because, you know, you're trying to provide the education for the child, the child, you know, and, and trying to keep it as contin, as continuous as possible. From the state level, upon notification of the need of enrollment of a homeless child, the liaison, again, Mrs. Copan, in the school district of residence, shall coordinate enrollment procedures immediately based upon the best interests of the child. And then if, again, if a dispute arises regarding enrollment of a homeless child, the homeless child shall be immediately enrolled. So you could see there's obviously the federal and the state, there, there's a lot of overlap here, but I felt it was important, we felt it was important to include both, just so everyone kind of understands, you know, what the district, what a district, any district, this, any, you know, any district in New Jersey, public school district is required to follow this. And then when you move into the tuition part, right? So federally, if the homeless child or youth's living arrangement in the area served by the district of origin terminate, and the child, though continuing their education in school of origin, begins living in any area served by another district, and LEA is just a fancy term for, I think, Learning Education Agency, if I'm not mistaken, right? So it's just the school district. The district of origin and the district in which the homeless child or youth is living shall agree upon a method to apportion the responsibility and cost for providing the child with transportation to and from the school of origin. If the district of origin, or sorry, if the districts are unable to agree upon such method, the responsibility and cost for transportation shall be shared equally. And it'll make a little more sense when, when you see the state's part of it. So the school district of residence for a homeless child or youth shall be responsible for the education of the child and shall pay for the cost of tuition when the child attends school in another district and provide transportation for the child. So I will explain what that actually looks like, and as I've sat through, it's taken me only about ten of these trainings to start to understand what we're actually doing and trying to go through all of the legalese, and that's why we're grateful to have Mr. Jacoby here, you know, who gets to eat and digest this for a living, God bless you. You know, but it will make a little more sense as you kind of see the action of what that looks like, because obviously, you know, finances are a big part of, of the challenges of trying to support people who are, are struggling, right? And so obviously, you know, we obviously want to support the kids, and so this is something that we're actually working through right now with the state, you know, as far as how, how does that, what does that funding look like, right? And so as far as our transportation, right, because tuition and transportation often go together, each district shall coordinate with other districts on inter-district issues such as transportation. Each liaison shall ensure that the parent guardian of homeless children and youth and any unaccompanied youth is fully informed of all transportation services, including transportation to the school of origin, and is assisted in accessing transportation. And on the state side, ensure the parent or guardian of a homeless child or youth or any unaccompanied youth is fully informed of all transportation services, et cetera. So obviously, we have to provide that transportation. And when we move on to the next slide, we have the district's responsibility. So this is where it really kind of boils down to the nuts and bolts of, of this. So the way a district of origin is determined is when a, a student has been domiciled, domiciled being, meaning sleeping in that place for more than three hundred sixty-five days, right? So after three hundred sixty-five days, if, if a student is in a temporary residence, right, for more than three hundred sixty-five days, Hanover Township, in this case, right, or any district where they are, becomes the district of origin. So for instance, let's just say we have a family who came from Chester, right, and they've been living at one of the hotels or motels in town. Up until three hundred sixty-five days, Chester is responsible for them financially. Once three hundred sixty-five days pass, that is when Hanover Township would have to take over, you know, paying for that. The other piece is that the parent has a choice of which school district the child attends. So if the parent says, I want my child to continue to go to Chester, then Hanover Township is paying Chester tuition, and we are paying for the transportation to get the child from Point A in Hanover Township to Chester. Now technically, there is no limit on how far that could happen. We could have a child that moves to Atlantic City, and if the parent says that the child, they want to go to Atlantic City, we are responsible to pay Atlantic City tuition, and we are also responsible to transport the child from here to Atlantic City. Now, there are mechanisms that I, I, as a superintendent, you know, in consultation with the liaison, could say, listen, we do not feel like it's in the best interest for your child to be on a bus for two hours each way back and forth. We are set, we are basically making the determination that your child has to come to Hanover Township. They then appeal that, but while they're appealing it, if they want to go to Atlantic City, we are bussing and paying Atlantic City to educate them. Then the regional liaison weighs in, and then the county superintendent essentially is where the, the ultimate decision rests, right? So if the county superintendent says, nope, they're going to Atlantic City, then that child is getting picked up on a two-hour bus ride going to Atlantic City and coming back. And, and if they say, nope, the child has to go to Hanover Township, then the child obviously comes to Hanover Township, right? And, and so I'm like a scenario person, so that's why, you know, some of the language is one thing, but just to understand what happens. So the other challenge, so, is that technically, what happens when, when a child or a family moves, Mrs. Copan is calling districts. So let's just say we have a family that's at one of our motel or hotels in town, right? They move to Parsippany. Mrs. Copan is calling Parsippany's liaison and saying, hi, Mr. and Mrs. so-and-so, this is Sherri Copan from Hanover Township, just informing you that this family has moved to Parsippany. Then that family gets relocated to another town. Hi, in Hoboken. Hi, Mr. and Mrs. so-and-so, this is Sherri Copan from Hanover Township, you're, that we have a child who is, district of origin was Hanover Township, they went to Parsippany, now they're in Hoboken. And then they move, as far as, as, as many places as they move where they're temporarily displaced, we are responsible as the district of origin. So with that, until a, a, a family either becomes permanently home, which of course, wouldn't that be wonderful, right, for people to get permanent housing, right, and not have to be in the situation? Or, right, like, so that's one option of how they would not be eligible for McKinny-Vento anymore, or they live in another town, so let's just say they go to, you know, a hotel in Hoboken. If they're in Hoboken for more than three hundred sixty-five days, Hoboken becomes the district of origin. But hypothetically, if you have a, a family who is temporarily displaced now, next year, following year, we would be responsible for their children's education and through eighth, through eighth grade as a district, because we're, we, because we're the district of origin. So that stays, that, that responsibility stays with the district of origin. The reason it wouldn't be through high school is because we're a K-8 district, right? So in, like I said, the only ways that they're not considered McKinny-Vento is if they find permanent housing, which woo-hoo, we would love that, or they establish, they're domiciled somewhere else for three hundred sixty-five days. Now, I can tell you, with the number of students that we're working through and supporting, and we'll have that slide Mrs. Copan will go through in a few moments. There are many students that have moved multiple times that Mrs. Copan has a very thorough spreadsheet on, and then it's all about the dates, because what's And then it's all about the dates, because what's happening now is districts, uh you're supposed to notify. Mrs. Copan is notifying these other districts. Other districts are not. So I'll give you an example. We just found out late last week that we have two students living in one of our hotels and motels that, oh, by the way, they've been there for three hundred sixty-five days, just about, we just didn't tell you. So guess what? So now, as of two weeks from now, we are financially responsible and we're the district of origin. And the county superintendent has been stressing, it is not right to 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 surprise other districts like that, because from a budgeting standpoint, we're, uh uh you know, just so everyone knows whether you're watching it at home or now, we're talking about twenty-six, twenty-seven budget right now, right, in our, in our central office, that's where we are right now. So this year's budgets, which is 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 cooked, right? It's 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 already allocated and 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 encumbered. So you're, when you start to surprise districts with these types of unknowns, we're talking, and you'll see the costs in a little bit, it's staggering. You know, we're not just talking like, you know, a hundred dollars, we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars, right? Um because you could think about what the cost is to be transporting kids, you know, sometimes up to an hour away from where they're coming from to here. Um and 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 I'm, you know, I'm being very mindful uh that this is obviously, there there's compassion, because you feel bad that human beings are in the situation. But at the same time, we're balancing that with the responsibility that we have, obviously, to be transparent to the public, to let people know how tax dollars are being spent, but also to just understand a little bit more about the process and and what our responsibility is, right? Um so some of the scenarios that we're going to highlight, we have in-district students who are general education, right? They don't require any extra services. Um they're, and then we also have special education slash related services, which would be through an IEP uh situation, right? So we have students uh in that category that are attending our district, that are uh eligible or classified as McKinny Vento. We also have out-of-district students that are also general education, and I'll explain that, because that's a little bit, sounds a little bit weird, but I'll explain what I mean by that. We also have, again, special education slash related services, uh and then transportation to and from the school of choice. And so I'm going to um show you the methods of reimbursement, and then Mrs. Copan's going to talk you through some of the scenarios. So when a family is in-state, so if they move from, let's just say, Chester, I'll use Chester again, I don't know why I'm choosing Chester, they have good apple picking, I'll go from Chester to Hanover, right? If it's under three hundred sixty-five days, Chester is responsible to either pay us if they want to come here, or they go to Chester and Chester buses them. So right now, we have other towns sending buses to the hotels and motels in our town to transport them to the district that they're in, right now, currently as we speak, right? So some of the motels and hotels in our town have about five towns worth of buses that are pulling through that parking lot every morning, because they have the right to go to that school, right? Uh you know, if they choose to. We have to, so like I said, up to three sixty-five, we are not paying for that as a district. Um after three sixty-five, same family, right, still wants to go to Chester. Now, we're either, we're using, you know, our transportation resources and and having our direct, our coordinator reach out to coordinate that transportation um and and getting a contract ourselves, because we don't have the the transportation fleet to be able to drive people, you know, all over different towns, right? So we obviously have to outsource that. Um and uh and and again, you'll see some of the costs of what that looks like. But we were, we are at that point, uh Chester is sending us a contract for the education of that child that we are paying, which basically is almost like, we're calling it an out-of-district placement, right? Because that, they have the oper- they have the right, according to the statute, to be able to go to Chester. Um and so they could keep wanting to go to Chester, uh and we would keep paying them, we would have to keep paying Chester, uh you know, from from our, from our, uh from our budget. So the New Jersey state does not reimburse anything for students that are coming from one state, uh sorry, one municipality to another municipality. That is all local, right? Uh you know, and I'll I'll keep my own opinions to myself uh about the funding piece of it. But um you know, it it it's it's really hard for all districts in New Jersey to be um, you know, incurring these additional fiscal uh challenges, right? Uh and and what we call an unfunded mandate, right? Because the mandate is not, you know, we want to help kids, of course, but they're, we're not getting the support that we need financially, you know, from the state to be able to do this. So the only reimbursement we get for students is if they move in from out of state, right? So if they move in from Florida to New Jersey, and we happen to be the first place that they enroll in, we are able to get reimbursement uh up to the three hundred sixty-five days. Uh then there, we, but we are the district of origin. So, you know, I'll give you an example, you know, if a family comes from out of state, we essentially, even if they weren't here for up to three hundred sixty-five days, we're still the district of origin for them, because this was their first landing place in New Jersey. So now, Mrs. Copan, and there, and there, there is a scenario like that, so it's not like I'm making this up out of out of nothing. Mrs. Copan is following, you know, this family around as well, not physically, but obviously, you know, keeping up with them, working with them. That family, again, gets to choose, since we're the district of origin, whether they want to come here or if they want to go to the district that they're domiciled in, right? So that's the family's choice. Um you know, and if they choose to come here, we are paying to bus them from wherever they're living now to come to Hanover. And if they choose to go to the district where they're currently living, then they, you know, we would pay the district. Now, we, you know, again, like I said, that's the only time where the state would be involved, um you know, as far as a financial, you know, reimbursement. So I'm gonna have Mrs. Copan share the uh the numbers with you, just so you can get a sense of our scenarios.
Thank you very much, Mr. Timmy. Appreciate your support during this, as well as Mr. Santiago, who's been very helpful in transportation, because we are chasing and relocating and looking at changing a lot of bus routes throughout the year in order to engage and be able to continue to offer the consistency in education. And that's our number one goal. When families are moving from district to district, from location to location, we're trying to offer them a consistent place. We can only imagine how stressful it must be for them to not have um a a a place to call home at night. So it's not a uh unempathetic situation, if I may add. Um so currently, just so you are aware, and I'll share with the board, we have nineteen students that I've been made aware of could be transferring into the district this year under that three hundred and sixty-five day rule. Those are the ones that I've been notified of properly to date for this coming school year. So in addition to what you're going to be seeing today, which are our real numbers, there's potentially nineteen, plus the districts who have not given us that protocol of notifying us within forty-eight hours, which is a customary just tradition that they're trying to start at the state level, but there's no restriction as to if that can happen or not. Um on the other side of that, I will share, I've been way on top of notifying school districts when people are displaced for that conscientious reason, that they do have to face their BAs and they do have to find transportation in order to continue those relationships. So we are trying to partner with those districts to do so. So what you'll see here are in-district students. We currently have ten students enrolled in our general education that are in-house. The parents have elected for them to come in-house to us. We currently have four under the special education resource class. Those are in-class support classes that we already have running, where there's co-teaching happening, um and does meet their IEP needs. We also have two that are in self-contained classrooms, um as well as you'll also see the ESL numbers there. Currently, we're in-house, we are transporting fourteen students to and from displaced. Now, it is not illegal to be displaced, it is not illegal to live in a tent. Um it is not illegal to live doubled up, so I just want to remind you that these are temporary situations. And these ones that are identified have been ruled out as being true McKinny Vento. These are not hypothetical numbers in any way.
And just to highlight the total for the in-district, so in case you can't see it, so five hundred fifty-seven thousand, three hundred fifty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents. And some of you might be asking, well, where's that number coming from? Right? So obviously, as part of our budget process that we file with the state every year and the board approves, uh that is our real cost per pupil, right? And and what cost per pupil is comprised of is what are all of the costs of the district? Uh and and then you obviously divide it by the students that are in the district, right? And Mrs. Krasny can correct me if I'm, if I'm, if I'm not correct. Uh and then that's where we get that cost. And all the districts around here hover around that twenty-four thousand dollar mark, so that's pretty consistent. Uh and then you'll notice some of the other um price, uh uh costs are higher because of the services that come with that, right? So a small group instruction, if you're in a classroom with three, four kids, because it's a resource room, obviously, you can do the math and figure twenty-two kids in a class, three kids in a class, or four kids in a class. And and then some students need speech, or OT, or PT, or different uh different related services, right? So that's where we're getting that cost from. Uh and ESL, again, uh is for our uh our multilingual learners. Um and then the transportation rate, uh you know, and that's basically essentially every child in this district to bus costs the district six hundred thirty-nine dollars and and change, right? So that's a, that's a standard amount. So um you know, and that, and that's, again, these are all documents that you could search up and look, so these numbers did actually come from somewhere, uh you know. Uh and like Mrs. Copan said, these are the real costs of our students that have been identified but are attending Hanover Township public schools. So now I'm gonna turn it back over for the, what we're calling out-of-district students.
So with that, can we go back one slide?
Sorry.
With that slide, I just want to note, we automatically assume that children are displaced, have been identified, they have not. They do not all come with IEPs or 504s or needing ESL or ELL programming. So a big component of that is when they do come to us, we are finding there's educational gaps. And we have to identify and go through an evaluation process, which can be very timely. Um unfortunately, some of the students are then displaced again to other places, in other schools, in other towns, in other states. Um so we're kind of chasing after them, making sure that we're doing our best to close those gaps. So in some ways, we we are just kind of going in a circle. But I want to point out that most of the students currently are general education students. Moving into what we have entitled out-of-district students, these are not out-of-district based on need academically. These are students in which the parent has chosen to attend the previous or the other school district. So currently, if you look at these numbers, they're quite high. We have general education students, we have five students in which parents have elected to have their children transported to other districts. What that means for Hanover is, we are getting a bill for their tuition at that other public school. We have reached out and offered our services, we have programs in-house in which they can attend. The parent has by choice decided to go to those other districts. So that's a cost that's been incurred by Hanover that's unestimated. Um also on there, you will see, and and that total is roughly twenty-four thousand per child. It changes depending upon the district in which they're attending. Um additionally, you will see right now, it lists out self-contained special education. We do have three children in out-of-district placements. Those are non-public districts. Um those are schools in which, again, we could absorb those children into our programming that we currently offer, but the parent has opted for that out-of-district placement. So the grand total is a little earth-shattering. When you look at that bottom right number, you will see it exceeds over seven hundred thousand dollars. And that is for parent choice. Includes transportation, out-of-district tuition, special needs students.
And and the clarification too. So if a child has certain needs, like they're out of district, right? I mean, you know, whether they're ours, or we we have to send them to a school that meets their needs, right? So, you know, so the parent choice piece, for the gen ed students, we have all those programs, you know, absolutely, we do. For some of the special education self-contained needs, and to Mrs. Copan's credit, you know, she's trying to work with the families, and maybe there is a, you know, a a more appropriate placement, you know, I can tell you that there is a student right now that's on a bus for over an hour every single day with some pretty severe special needs. Um and you know, the question is, is that best for the kid, right? And so uh and and the challenge becomes, you know, um Mrs. Copan is 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 working really, really hard to foster those relationships with those parents, but it gets to a point where there's a lot of unanswered emails, unanswered phone calls, and I'm not judging why or why not. She's not getting that partnership, but it really does make it challenging, you know, because you're trying to follow, you know, a lot of different scenarios. And 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 I want to remind everyone, her primary job is the director of special education to support all of the students in the district that have IEPs uh and 504s, right? And so she's doing a fabulous job. Um it's like she has a twin, because, you know, she, or she just doesn't sleep. Um you know, but but it really is, it is really taxing and and you know, and and like I said, not that we don't want to do anything for kids, right? That's why we're in this, but there is a real human factor to this, right? Or the manpower, like Mr. Anderson spoke about earlier, right? Uh where where there are limitations, and I think that what I'm finding in my experience is there are very big districts that are getting a a a significant amount of funding. Um you know, and I'm not saying it's everywhere, but there are districts that are getting a lot of funding, or they have a des- a designated McKinny Vento liaison, right? We are a small district, right? We 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 have to be scrappy and resourceful and, you know, and and we're proud of that, right? But because we want to be fiscally responsible, uh you know, but what happens at a certain point, when you start to add, you know, we have about a thirty-four million dollar budget, when you figure about one point three-five million dollars, right? Um of 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 pretty much close to real cost with the potential for another nineteen students to come, right, at any point, right? Um you know, it really does make it challenging, right, to continue to plan for that, right? I mean, just from your home situation, right? If, you know, you you can't plan for a tree to fall on your house, God forbid. But, you know, at least hopefully the insurance will pay for the tree, you know? Uh you know, and 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 then and then you call Mr. Mayor to come uh help with the stump grinding, right? Uh you know, uh but uh but you know, it's definitely uh, it's definitely, you know, it's a challenge. And and like we said, we felt it was really important just to help people understand a little bit more about this, and I've learned a whole heck of a lot. Uh you know, in the last year and few months that I've been here, and I know Mrs. Copan has as well. Um you know, but you know, obviously, the district's also working creatively. We're trying to pursue alternate revenue streams, right? Revenue being the money that comes in. So we did move into the lunch program and enrolled in the national school lunch program. That will provide us reimbursements from the government, right, for these meals uh based on, you know, participation. So even students who are not reintroduced lunch eligible, pe- the more people that buy lunch, the more revenue the district generates, right? And so that's a a really great way that the district, you know, can 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 benefit from that uh and help offset some. The other piece of that is it also with our, with us being enrolled, could allow us to get more grant opportunities, right? Because we have identified we're in the formal program, whereas we hadn't previously been. Facilities usage, you know, with the board's support, we've worked really hard to redo our our fee schedule, right, for our facilities usage, our field usage. Um you know, we had Madison this past summer rent out our school, uh Bee Meadow, for fifty thousand dollars, right? So we're being very creative and we're trying to find any way we can to bring in, to bring in revenue for the district. Uh and again, as I said, grants, and we are aggressive, and and I have to give Mrs. Krasny, our BA, a a huge shout out, because she's like the grant, like, queen. I don't know, she she's like, did you hear about this grant? Like, no, oh, you know, I I, we're gonna look into that, right? So but that's part of what it is, right? We realize that, you know, we can't be on a runaway train of tax increases and, you know, but at the same time, we're we're getting to a point where, you know, the budget is getting stretched, 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 stretched to a point where it is gonna pop, right? And I say this, and I think at some point, we might have a standing room only audience, and it's not because, you know, w- we're trying to just share what we're doing, but we're also, it's kind of like the scene in Indiana Jones, where like the boulder's coming, and we're we're just trying to run and 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 as quickly as we can to to to, before it runs us over, right? Um you know, and I say that in jest, obviously, we are having a lot of thoughtful conversations and in behind the scenes and with the board and with the administration, uh and also with the township, you know, with uh Mr. Mayor. We appreciate you being here tonight as well. You know, I know you've been involved, uh you know, very much in our conversations, and you know very much where we are and and how much of a of a challenge this is for our school district, and a former board member too. So I know, you know, you 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 come from, you started, you started in, uh you know, in their seat right here. So we we realize you understand the real challenge that this is posing for for our district. Um you know, and then this is what no one wants to hear about, is potential cost-saving measures, right? Uh but these are things that, you know, depending, and I'm just being worst-case scenario, nineteen more kids show up at some point this school year. Mrs. Krasny, our BA, is gonna come to me and say, uh Houston, we have a problem. W- we're not gonna be able to pay our bills, right? Uh and 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 I'm not just saying it for, you know, sensationalism, right? Because we're really trying to be as creative as we can. Um but, you know, we could be at a point where anything outside the school day, like clubs, sports, all becomes pay-to-play, right? We could be at a point where, right now, we offer one point five mile busing, which the state says two. We could have to expand that to two miles and see how many kids then don't get bused, right? The state, we're in accordance with the state, but I know, you know, we'll also have standing room only for that board meeting as well. Um you know, because people, you know, a half a mile, I was in another town where they changed it by like two tenths of a mile, and people were enraged, right? So the state says we have to do two miles. Right now, we have kindergarten busing at point five miles. Uh we don't have to offer that, right? Um you know, we could just say every student is offered busing at two miles, or what's called hazardous routes, where they're coming, like, we don't want them crossing Route Ten or things like that, right? Uh and then the other one i- is a really sensitive one, and it's it's a RIF, which stands for Reduction in Force. I'm sure you've seen the news over the last several months in other districts, where you've had other districts that have been letting go forty, fifty, sixty people. We're not trying to say that we're doing that, and we're, as of today, that's not happening. Um you know, but, and of course, some of these districts are a lot bigger, but uh we're, our priority is always gonna be the instructional position, so there is a point where we're going to have to look at non-instructional positions. What does that mean? Secretaries, uh you know, lunch and recess aides, right? Some of the pieces, and I would argue, are so important to our schools. But at the same time, right, again, we're, you know, we we aren't the federal government, we can't keep printing money, you know, and unless someone's writing us a big check, uh you know, or our taxes are 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 significantly increasing, right? We have to make sure that we're 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 able to meet those. So, um you know, so these are things, and I say this, you know, it says potential, potential could be, I could be letting everyone know in February that some of this is happening. I could be letting some people know in April. We could maybe get through the school year, right? But we're 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 literally walking on a very fine tight rope right now. And I really recognize, especially in the position that we're in, our our, we're not trying to alarm people just to get people up in arms. We're trying to educate and inform people with where our situation is. Um you know, and 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 how we're working to try to do as much as we can to preserve the excellence that people move to this town. and 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 how we're working to try to do as much as we can to preserve the excellence that people move to this town for. And so on the last slide, you know, I say, we realize this is a challenging time for many public school districts. The Hanover Township Public Schools are committed to doing everything possible to maintain the level of programs and services the community deserves while also adhering to the N J D O E statutory requirements and the fiscal and budgetary implications needed to operate. And we're committed to staying transparent with you, you know, and and letting you know, you know, what's happening. And I have to say, you know, this board has been, you know, the most transparent board I've ever seen as far as what they want to share with the community. And sometimes hard news is hard to digest, right? But it's coming from a place where they're here as elected officials themselves to fight for the families, the children, and the taxpayers of Hanover Township, right, as well. If I want to go buy, you know, you know, a Maserati, you know, they're gonna say, no, right? And because that's their job as the checks and balances, right? And they're the ones that spend the money as the board. They just tell us where to put it or where where we want it to go. But they are, you know, they have that responsibility, you know, and it's a huge responsibility, and we're grateful for them being willing to 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 sit in these seats. You know, but it but it is definitely, you know, it's a it's a fluid situation, and that's the other piece I want to stress. This is not something that we even know, like, every day, we're in touch about this, right? You know, and and I will say, as far as some of my colleagues go, I, as a superintendent, I'm not looking for a lifetime achievement award. I am intimately involved in this with Mrs. Copan every single day, which, you know, is is because of what a priority this is for our district, but also how we're trying to navigate this so that the kids and the families, by and large, don't really notice that we're trying to navigate the situation. But like I said, we felt it was important to educate you as a as a public, right? And as a community to just kind of level with you and say, here's where we are with it, you know, and 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 how it could potentially impact our district. And we're gonna keep trying to get grants. We're gonna keep trying to pursue alternate revenue streams, right? We're all, we're gonna keep doing all of that. But at a certain point, you know, when you're averaging, you know, twenty thousand dollars a student for out of district transportation, right? So for students that choose to come to Hanover Township and that we're busing, you know, potentially almost up to an hour away, you know, that's that that adds up, right? Though those are real, real, real costs, you know, so I I don't want to keep going on because I know we have a whole board meeting to get to. Is there any questions from the board?
I actually just also wanted to add on to what Mr. Sumi was saying. Thank you both very much. When we talk about the potential cost savings measures and you mentioned, you know, about tax increases, the board, we are limited to a two percent cap. So all of these expenses have to come from what our budget currently is. So this is not, you know, I know some people have reached out to the board and said, you know, well, we are very, you know, we can afford it. We have a budget that we have to stick to. There's no finding, you know, extra money. You know, I mean, aside from the initiatives that we're doing, which don't quite catch up.
Or if we go, we would, or we'd go to a vote, right? We would put it, we would have an increase higher, and we would go to the vote and ask all the you as constituents, would do you vote to increase the budget beyond two percent, right? You know, and that's the only way we could increase it to your point beyond the two percent.
But even if, and if the voter voted down, guess what? You still have to pay for this because this is a federal, this is a federal law.
Hundred percent.
You really are stuck with the two percent tax levy. And there's the the exceptions to the two percent tax levy are if health benefits go up an astronomical amount, the D O E, the state D O E will allow you to raise taxes above two percent for really health benefits and possibly energy. That's it. Not for McKinney Vento.
Yeah, I'd like to add a couple of numbers behind that, just for context. So the the district currently runs about thirty million dollar budget annually. So that two percent increase that we're allowed to request under the law is only six hundred thousand dollars. And just as what you had said, our the insurance for the all the employees went up by that amount, by that six hundred thousand from last year to this year. It's about thirty percent increase. So just that alone, one line item consumes our whole budget increase. So everything else that's increasing at the same time, at far greater than that two percent inflation rate are not covered. So where does all that come from? It comes from our savings. But so some people may think, okay, we have a savings account. That's no big deal. Except that's already planned out for long-term maintenance to take care of all the infrastructure of all the schools. So you had H VAC roofs, paving, the buildings themselves, these things. So over time, that continually depletes until we're forced to go out and ask the towns, townspeople to give us a referendum. So that's a large lump sum of money, basically a mortgage attached to the school that we all pay off over time, twenty years or something. And I was at a New Jersey School Boards Conference last week, and I I heard some pretty surprising things. I I went to a training class about referendums, and very unusual stuff was said there for me at at least. Because our town doesn't ask for referendums very often. Our school district has, the last time they they did one was in the two thousands or or two thousand teens to expand the elementary schools. And that's been paid off for years. So we haven't had extra budget levied on us from this district in quite a while. The township itself hasn't put a a referendum on the the people in fifty years. That's not the norm for New Jersey. And I asked the instructor after the class, I I said, how come you're up here telling people that is the moment your referendum's paid off, you should then ask the town for another referendum? Like, and then he said, oh, well, it's easier on them because they've already been paying the higher rate. And the moment it's paid off, it's gonna stay at that higher rate, and you get a whole new mortgage on the school, a new referendum. It's no problem. They won't feel it. I'm like, but you're just taxing like people more and more. Why aren't the schools able to withstand their their standard functions with their budget? And he said, because that two percent cap, that was put in around, what, two thousand eight or something or a couple of years back? And it's an artificial limit. And because of that limit, in New Jersey, it's now par for the course for school districts to just referendum over and over and over. And we're doing everything we can to not do that. So I hope that gives some background perspective on what this situation is and why it's unusually hard for our district that has been run extremely conservatively financially for as long as I've been alive. So thank you.
I just have a couple of points also. I think, you know, first of all, are are we allowed to persuade families to try to stay in district? And for instance, I mean, we just saw from Mr. Wasserman, these phenomenal numbers, how we beat out the state. I think we should be taking a very aggressive position opposing any out of district placements where the school of origin do not compare with our numbers. Because you if you leave this town to go to another another town, you're already, it's already not a good thing for it's, in my opinion, it's already not in the best interest of the child because now the child is in a bus, you know, commuting, and we know what the traffic situation is in North Jersey. So they're in a bu- on a bus for about an hour to an hour and a half to two hours a day now. Already not in the best interest of the child than just staying local. And number two, if the district doesn't compare to our numbers, well, then it's not in the best interest of that child. And we should be aggressively taking that position and and let them appeal, and we'll fight those fights. But I think we should be proud of our district's numbers and our performance. And unless you can show us that the district of origin is better than ours, it's not in the child's best interest. You know, just because he has or she has some friends there that he or she wants to stay in school with, doesn't, you know, that's, that can't be the full analysis. And, you know, my, I just want people to understand this. This is a scam. It made, and the law may very well have been well-intentioned, but it's being exploited by the state, okay? They they are, they are compelling suburbs to subsidize more urban districts who, under the Abbott funding formula, are already getting more money than what we get. So on top of our tax dollars going to these other districts, we are now then cutting them a check per child when that child decides they're gonna be placed here, because let's not fool ourselves about that. They are being placed in our district. Nobody's looking up in the phone book and deciding, hey, the red carpet inn looks like a great place for us to go live. They're being placed there. So people within actors within the state are placing these people in our district, then being and being coached and educated on the fact that we will then have to pay to send them back to the the area in which they came from, and 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 we're stuck with the bill. It's a scam. That's what it is. There's no, the 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 law was not meant to accommodate a a constant mill of of replacing families and children out into suburban areas from urban areas because that's where a majority of these families are coming from. And frankly, from failed governing policies in those cities and those towns that result in higher number of homelessness. We're not talking about a a a family in our town who their house burns down and they're temporarily displaced or someone loses a job and they're temporarily, those are the isolated incidents incidents that this law was meant to account for. That's not how it's being used. It is being used to force us to subsidize these urban areas. And it's something is going to have to give. And I just want to be very clear because I know this is a big issue in the town, who the bad actor is here. It's the state, okay? It's these districts that don't tell us and scam it, scam the system, exploit it, don't tell us until the last minute, and then we're stuck having it, you know, we're stuck holding the bag and having to figure out how to do it. So, you know, everybody's got to keep their eye on the ball, I guess, and and we should be as aggressive as possible in opposing this type of exploitation of the law. If it's something that the law was designed and meant to address, then absolutely we should, we should be, you know, doing what we can i- in order to help. And again, I'm not talking about the people who find themselves in these situations. Those people are being exploited. They don't know what's happening. They're just being educated and told, oh, you're gonna go to this great town in Morris County. It's gonna be great. Oh, and by the way, if your kid wants to still go to school here, they can, and they'll pay for it. I mean, who's not gonna say, oh, okay, that sounds great? Of course, that it's 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 being, the law is being manipulated in such a way that is so strategic. It, this is, this was not an issue five years ago. This was not an issue ten years ago. All of a sudden, it's becoming, you have a business in town that has made a business model af- and millions of dollars off of this exploitation of this law, okay? That that is insane to me. And, you know, we can, we can look at these laws, but it looks like the way it's drafted, you know, again, well-intentioned, living in a hotel or motel, living in an emergency and transitional shelters, living in a car, campgrounds. Yes, these were supposed to be, these, this, this, this was supposed to address scenarios that befall people with with no cause or no fault of their own. And they find themselves in this situation, and it's meant to make sure that a child is not caught in in the in the melee where now they they don't have a home, they don't have a school to go to. That's what it's meant to, it's meant to ensure, I mean, where it says we have to enroll immediately. That's meant to ensure there's no gap in education for the child. It's not meant to provide, like I said, a a a replacement mill throughout the state where predominantly citizens from predominantly urban areas, where the policies there have failed, the people find themselves homeless, are then shipped out to another area of the state where, ah, they can afford it. And that's, that's how it's being used, and I I adamantly oppose our, you know, just compliance with with this law. I mean, obviously, we have to comply with the law, and we will. But I do think, for instance, using the best interest analysis to our benefit to ensure that, you know, we're we're propping up our school, we're looking at our numbers, and unless you can beat our numbers, your child is going to school here. And you want to appeal it, appeal it. We'll have that fight. We have a great attorney who can help us in that regard. But I just, you know, I wanted to make those points. It's not so much a question, just points that I wanted to make sure people understand that we're committed to doing what we can within the bounds of the law to oppose what I view as a scam. It's an exploitation of of a very well-intentioned law. And and it's, it's, it's really disgusting to to what they're doing to these these people who are having a a tough time. They probably can't even wrap their head around what they're going through, and they're just being shoved in a new place where they don't know the community, they don't know, Route ten is not a a good place for a young child to be walking up and down to try to, you know, a lot of these people come from a place where they were able to walk around the corner to to a convenience store to get milk and groceries, you know? There's not, there's no convenience store on Route ten. You know, these kids aren't being able, these families aren't able to understand exactly where they now find themselves and and where they're gonna have to 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 get around. They don't understand where the buses pick up and 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 I don't even know where the buses and everything are in the stuff. This is a driving town. People drive. So and and I guarantee a lot of these people, if they're homeless, they probably don't drive, a lot of them. And these are all the things, these people are being harmed, and they're being used in a way, again, to to compel districts who already are disadvantaged by the Abbott decision to to actually subsidize those districts in addition to what they're already getting from the state. It's it's disgusting.
Also, my question is for the teachers, how much time? Or when are they told they're getting a new child into the class, and you said sometimes it just happens?
No, it doesn't just happen. We we actually make sure that the school is notified and that they actually have an adequate. Usually, we try to do like a two-fold a turnaround just because we don't want to surprise a teacher, right? Because you also want the child to feel welcome that they're coming in and have a desk and a name tag on there. And it's also not fair to the school or the teacher. So generally speaking, I mean, it's, it's, you know, if we find out at three o'clock, that day is over. So essentially, you're looking at probably the the third day, right, at that point? But yeah, no, there's definitely, you know, they say immediately, and that's my interpretation of immediately is we still have to make sure that we're, you know, we still have a school to run, so we can't just say, timeout, everyone. We gotta get this going, right? So we do the best we can, but it's it's very fluid, you know, and we are making sure to to put that, you know, the conversation with the principal as well as the, you know, so that the principal can look at it and see, well, what section is that child going into? You know, so those conversations are happening.
Okay, perfect.
I also want to just add that generally, if we're looking at transportation costs, it takes five to ten days to set those contracts up. So we are doing the background check to make sure when they identify that they are misplaced displaced in in town, are they really within the confines of the town? Because sometimes they think that they're going to Hanover Township, and it's not Hanover. So that's part of the early strategies to figure out where are they located? Why is it temporary displacement? And how can we get them additional supports? So we have been able to get things like bus tickets. We have been able to get things like hygiene kits to send to families in order to support that transition into school. We don't want them to start the school day without being the only child in the classroom that doesn't have a Chromebook, right? Everyone has to access education, and whether that means through technology or through transportation, that's what this team works really diligently to do. I do want to clarify for you, I've gotten to know a lot of these families very intimately. A lot of them are offered a voucher system. The hotels in town are not a shelter, and so I just want to kind of put out that understanding. If they were a shelter, they would be regulated at a different level by the state. Additionally, we would be able to submit for some reimbursement, which we are not. They are not a shelter. The shelters in the surrounding counties are full. I know firsthand Warren County, Sussex County, they are sending to Morris County. This is not just a Hanover thing. This is a statewide epidemic that is happening. But they are offered a voucher, and I will contest many of them look at the vouchers and say, do I want to go to Camden? Or I don't, do I want to go to Hanover? I've never heard of Hanover, but I've heard of Camden.
Yeah, I want to, I have something to say. So first of all, you also didn't touch on the fact that once a student is here, their siblings are then attached to that student. They can go to the, I remember having that discussion. So whatever district that their parents choose that child to go, they don't want to separate the children. We could wind up having multiple students in one family, paying for that. I also think that, you know, I think that we can agree that other extreme measures beyond our potential cost-saving measure here we discussed may be needed if this issue continues on the trajectory. It is not, this is round one, people. Round one. I I don't think it's sunk in to our township. We are not here saying we don't want these children taught. We don't have compassion for these families and these children. This was never uttered by anyone on this board, anyone in these, any of these classrooms. However, we have a responsibility to all the children. And as you can hear, there's so much time and effort and everything else pulled from our administration and our teachers that it is affecting every single child in this district. We want these children taught as well and as properly and in the safest environment that we can give them. It is unsustainable, and that is the issue here. Thank you.
I just wanted to confirm that I checked with the Director of Planning, and I asked, are there any homeless shelters in Hanover Township? And the answer is no. So somewhere along the line, a breakdown occurred where actions taken by people outside this room turned two hotels in our town into homeless shelters, and we're now here as a result. Thanks.
To clarify, they're not shelters. They're homeless placement locations. Otherwise,
Otherwise, like they said, we could get some funding out of that, just to clarify.
Right, without the appropriate funding to back it, or really the appropriate conditions for children to be living in, and I have police reports to back that up. Some of the most horrendous things I've ever read on paper came from a certain location.
And the other piece, just to add too, if a student is enrolled in our school by October 15th, we do put them on the ASSA, which is for the state aid form. So, uh, you know, there is, there is, you know, if any child was here by October 15th, they will be part of that, um, and that's standard, separate from, you know, the, the homeless reimbursement or anything like that, um, you know, but, you know, you're, you're getting, you know, we're not getting reimbursed for all of the ancillary things that we're talking about. And I know there's members of the public that have comment, but I know it's the board member, uh, Board President's meeting, and there's a, so I'll leave that to you.
Thank you. Um, I did want to invite up Mayor Gallagher, um, if you'd like to say a couple words, please. Thank you, of course.
First of all, thanks for your light. No, I don't. Yeah. Mr. McCabe, you can tell he used to play and sing, right? Hey, testing one, too. First of all, thank you very much for inviting me, and thank you very much for your partnership, um, to try to find a good solution to this series of problems. Uh, the last time I saw a mayor come in here and, and try to work side by side with the Board of Education is when I was on the Board of Education. It was during some very serious budget cuts under the Christie administration. And the words were simply that, they were words. They were patronizing us, making us feel like we had a friend in Town Hall, and it was, it was a bunch of nothing. We've all learned since I got bought into this in the spring that our words do mean something, our actions do mean something, and our goal is abundantly clear, and our goal is to do the best we can for everyone, especially the families that need the help the most. But at what cost? So I would just like to tell you one philosophical thing. When I was getting married, I talked to my good friend's father, and he said to me, I'm going to give you advice that will, you will have a beautiful marriage forever if you listen to me. And it took me till like 30 to start to really listen to anybody. So I said, please, let me hear your great advice. He says, there's two kinds of people. During a problem or a crisis, there's the person that wants to figure out whose fault it is. And if your wife is that person, just take the blame for it, and everything's going to be good by the next day. But there's the person that identifies an issue and wants to solve it. And I'm honored to say that when we began looking at this together, I talked to some people in my loop, and you know what I was told? That, that's the state's problem. That's Murphy's problem. Well, how does that help us? How does that help Hanover Township? How does it help our kids? And how does that help us address these budget issues? Because I know from being on that side of the desk and on my side of the desk with the governing body, these budgets are really tough. They're really tough, and we're limited. So I would like to say one more thing before I jump into a little bit, and I'm very limited on what I can say tonight, but I will say probably a little more than I shared with my governing body, because we're in this fight together, and things are starting to move in a beautiful direction. And I mean that, and my words mean something. When I was running for the Board of Ed the second time, a reporter from The Eagle said to me, what's the most important skill that a Board of Ed member, Board of Ed member should have? And I thought, and I said, listening. I said, you have to have listening skills. And Henry Kissinger was very big on talking about the importance of listening. So when you listen and you really try to understand, and you don't have to be the smartest person in the room, you could start to create solutions to problems and call in your resources. And if you have the credibility and you have the integrity, people are going to return your phone call and work with you and help you. So we had one meeting, and you guys know who it was with. It was about 10, 12 people, not the highest level, but people that said they can help us. And it was a false start. It was a nothing meeting. 30 days later, I followed up and said, where are we? Oh, well, let me get back to you. So I called Senator Panaccio, who's our senator now. I told him about everything we were going through and all the problems that we had. And I said, I'm an optimistic guy, I can always find an angle. I'm not finding an angle here. And I told you that too, Lisa, I don't see an angle. Senator Panaccio set us up with a meeting down in Trenton. We went down to Trenton, it was me, where's Fred? Fred, Chief Locke, and Senator Panaccio. I thought I was going to fill in some blanks. It was 14 people in Governor Murphy's conference room and seven or eight on teams. He introduced me and said, take the floor. I was like, man, I can talk, what? I can carry a meeting like this, but so, but I did. And what I said was, I said, I know how this works politically. I know you're looking at us as the haves against the have-nots, and it's very easy to think that we're affront, and our county has an attitude problem and just doesn't want certain people to interact. And I said, it couldn't be further from the truth. I said, I come from Hudson County. I said, a lot of people chose the suburbs. I know a lot of people won't leave Hudson County. A lot of times, it's a choice, and you nailed quite a few things, Greg. You want to walk to the store, you want to walk to church, you have your best friend that lives two houses down. My, my relatives, some of them still don't have driver's licenses because you don't need it. But here's what I began with the state. I said, this is a well-intentioned program. And you said that, too. And I said, but I'm going to tell you why this well-intentioned program is failing. And the people that it's failing are the very people that you're trying to help. I started with the children. I said, I'm going to advocate for the children today. I said, everyone that I know that has children, child or children, will give everything they have, including their lives, to make sure that kid has everything. And my children went here, and I still have pictures from when Katie decorated her locker prior to coming here in sixth grade. I said, how do these kids have a fighting chance? How do they have a fighting chance? I said, look at the environment they're living in. Look at the crime, look at the conditions, look at the lack of sleep, the lack of good nutrition, the, the, sometimes not having a loving parent or guardian. The police, the first responders, and I'm not going to go too into the conditions because we all know what the conditions are. Now picture that kid coming to school with two hours of sleep that they can't fit in. I said, this is no environment for our children, period. And I said, and we're going to back it up with hard data today. And we had quite a bit from our police department, our police records are public, public record. We went into quite a bit about, um, the amount of calls we have and the type of problems there are in this facility. After we went through quite a bit, the Assistant Attorney General came up to me after the meeting, and he said, Mayor, would it make you feel better if we pulled the children out of there? Now immediately, I thought about your budget. First of all, the safety to kids, second of all, the budget for the schools. And I said, to be honest with you, that would be a start. It would be a start, but it's a problem, and it's a state problem, because you're taking a piece of property and turning it into a multimillion-dollar business model from a failed state program. From there, we began a relationship with the DCA. I got a call two days later, and they said, Gallagher, we have vouchers, we have an idea, it's as fast as you want to make it happen. I said, I'll meet you tonight. We've been working with the DCA now for 74 days, seven days a week. We had meetings, and now Hanover Township is officially a satellite office. I have numbers of the amount of people that they're placing, currently placing, and they're in process now. Every Friday for the next four weeks, they're going to be using our office as a satellite office, including Hopewon from Sheriff Gannon, because we're trying to provide services. What I said was, I think that's great, and I think it's kind of cute, but if we empty out and create available rooms, what's going to stop other counties from looking at that as an opportunity? Then I was told, well, Morris County's not placing anymore. I said, well, that doesn't mean anything to me, because other counties can place in those available rooms. So we're looking at that piece, and that's again, legal with Fred. We're looking at that piece as a major piece. From that, we had a meeting, the residents of the facility wanted to have a meeting with me, and they wanted no police present. 80 people that live in the motel came and had a meeting on a Friday night with me and four members of the state. At the end of the meeting, they wanted to break the room up into two pieces. They said, we're going to take all your information, and we're going to start to talk to you about vouchers and placing you out of, out of this facility that is not created to house people long-term. And we talk about long-term, too. What is long-term? Is it a kitchenette? We went through all of that quite a bit. Make a long story short, they're making quite a bit of progress with these placements, but I'm still not comfortable that we could put in a mechanism to stop them from replacing. So we're looking at the business model that the, that the businesses like this put out there to accept, almost like the bid process in business, to accept more and more people, because it turned into a beautiful business that's, you can make a lot of money on it, but on the backs of the people it needed the most. But I want you to know that the people have come up to me in the meeting, and when I went to visit the DCA, and I talked to them almost seven days a week. I have a meeting tomorrow with one of Governor Murphy's chief of staff in Town Hall at 4:30. We're looking at the progress, we're looking at what we could do. I told them that I'm speaking to you guys tonight. But I also had a meeting with the Department of Education. I'm not bragging, and some of this isn't good for me, because I'm not one of those guys, and we live with them all the time, to talk about I, 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 I don't do that. But we had a meeting with the Department of Education, and it was my meeting. We had nine people on a Teams meeting. And I said, let's just look at the funding, let's look at reimbursement, let's look at federal, let's look at state. And the one guy on the meeting with me wasn't well-versed in it, and he referred to a grant, and I told you this, Mark. I said, I don't want to look at a grant, I want to look at subsidies, I want to look at offsetting costs. And there's all different mechanisms, and I'm talking about this because I'm the guy that got a $3.2 million grant for the rivers. So education and students and their well-being is a lot more important than cleaning out a river. So I want you to know on the municipal level, I hear you loud and clear, we hear you loud and clear. We have about five or six pieces that are pushing and pushing and pushing. And you read about one of them last week, and I can't really speak on that today. But I want you to know, did I hear you? You know I can be pretty aggressive. My name is Thomas, I was Christian Thomas, I am doubting Thomas, I don't believe anybody until I see it, and that's real. And I want you to know that I'm available 20 hours a day. The chief has my wife's cell phone from 12 to 4, her phone's on, but mine's charging in the kitchen. But I, I don't really want to do a Q and A, because I'm very, very careful. If, if any of you guys have one or two questions that maybe I can paint on the corners with, I'd be happy to do it. And Fred, if you'd like to fill in any blanks I might have missed, but does anybody have anything that I can try to address to you real quick?
We've been sued, so I'm not going to ask you any questions.
And, and, and Mayor, Mayor, I mean, the board, we've, we've discussed things in closed session, we understand the legal parameters that you're, you guys are contained in, you're in litigation right now, we appreciate what you're doing. I think the only way that this problem is going to be solved is holistically with, you know, the board providing you the data, uh, the kids coming in, working with the state, um, and hopefully the state legislatures come up with something. Because I think the one thing, if you looked at the two costs, you had the one that's $570,000 for the kids that are coming here. The ones that are being shipped out, that's almost $800,000. So a real simple solution for the DOE would be if a child is placed here in, 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 in a temporary residence, they should go to school here and not be put on a bus, because the problem with the busing is you can't even find busing. So, you know, that, that could cut down those costs tremendously. And really, the only kids that should be bused are kids that this district cannot educate because of their specialized disabilities, and then those limited kids would be, would go to, be bused to an out-of-district placement, um, where they would, where they'd get the education that they need. But I think what, what, um, Board Member, who Greg said earlier, is it is, it's just, it's a mill, and it's not just happening in Hanover, it's happening in any town that has hotels or motels. Literally, Route 23, Route 46, Route 10, you look at those hotels, they're, they're not being used for business, folks, they're being used as these temporary shelters where the state is placing them.
And, and that's the one point I made, and I make over and over, if this was private sector, this would not be a $15 million business, period. But I want to say two more things before I ask Fred, and then Fred, I didn't talk myself into a corner yet, did I? Okay, not yet, did you hear that, guys? Uh, I just want to say, too, when, when I was on the Board of Ed for the first two, three years when I was on the governing body, they teased me that I thought I was still on the Board of Ed, because I differentiate this, these financial problems differently than some people. I look at it as all of our money. It's Hanover Township money. And even when I got on the Board of Ed, I said, it cost $85 million to live in Hanover Township. And I heard from so many people on the governing body, well, that's the Board of Ed budget, that's the Board of Ed budget. And I'd say, but it, it's our money. So I want you to know that I don't see myself as having any daylight between anybody on this governing body, and I don't see any daylight between me and any of the residents, and I will not walk away from a fight, but I like to get all my information, I like to listen, and I like to be smart, and I like to have strategy. So we have to communicate, and I will not walk away from a fight, and I think you guys are going to be pretty happy with some of the developments that have just taken place in the last couple days. And I'm available 20 hours a day, and some of you guys, I'm available 24, you can call my wife's cell phone. If nobody, if there's no other questions, I'm going to ask Fred to speak for a minute or two, if he could.
I just want to say thank you very much for coming, and thank you for speaking, and we do appreciate all the hard work that you've been doing. So, thank you.
And you know what, Lisa, you're the president, but I'm going to put this out for you to make the decision. If anybody would like to meet me on a Friday afternoon at Town Hall and, and, and just sit in for an hour and see what the process actually is, and see what we can learn and take away from it, because like, like Mark, even Mark said, this is going to go around, you said this is going to go around, this is a problem that we have to solve together and come up with a solution. And I want you to know that nobody's doing what we're doing. I was advised, and I spoke to him this morning for a half an hour, DCA, one of the Directors of Housing, about different pieces of what we actually can do. And he also said to me, I want to, are you updating the gubernatorial candidates, both of them? And I said, that's my job, too, because we're the only ones trying to fix this rather than point at one another. And I said, I am. And there are models, and there's, there's very different opinions on how this can be solved. But we have a lot of work to do, and I'm ready to do it, and I know you guys are. So I'm just going to say thank you very much for everything you guys are doing, and you know I'm available all the time. Thanks, guys.
Mayor, just make, make sure if there's something you want me to touch upon, but I'll, I'll just want to fill in some of the things that the mayor had to say, but please interrupt me if I'm going. First, good evening, everybody. I want to say thank you for having us tonight. What I do want to tell you as township attorney, that, you know, back in March of this year, the mayor and the administration indicated to us, thanks to you, that this has to be a priority, the issue, what was, spoke about this evening. And so the governing body concerned about what was going on in hotels and the health and safety and welfare, updated its hotel registration and licensing ordinance that had been outdated for probably 50 years, okay? Which isn't uncommon, we, we've seen that across the state. But what was different was the insistence to make sure there was compliance, that all of the hotels registered and complied. So with that being said, and in response to that, from an enforcement standpoint, we're in federal district court with one of the hotels. And again, we are limited, but I think it's important that you, you are made aware. There are, there's myself, and there's two other attorneys that are representing the township. And the first thing that was done is when the, the ordinance was being enforced, the, one of the owners of the hotel and their attorney filed this in New Jersey Superior Court. We immediately decided we wanted this decided in federal district court. So we moved it to federal district court, and that was opposed by, and I'll just say, the hotels for now. That was opposed, that was a battle, we thought that was the place where we wanted it to be, we couldn't resolve that. And about 10 days ago, the judge issued an opinion that the, um, the matter will stay in federal district court, which is important to us. Now, from there, the other issue that, that has come to light is we have also taken on not only the hotel licensing aspect, but we've now looked even closer at the zoning aspect of this as well. It's because it's, it's a priority, it's a health and safety concern, we've gone back through the history of all the properties, this goes for all hotels, so, so that I'm clear on the record. And, you know, with that in mind, notices of violations have been issued, and it has now prompted yet another aspect of what will likely be more litigation. But it also has prompted, uh, some discussions that may lead to, is what I can say, a cease[1767.11] and desist from any new placements at these hotels, effective immediately. And that's something we're on the cusp of, you can't hold me to it, but I wouldn't get up here and say it unless the mayor had said that that was all right to generally discuss. Why is that important? Because if the mayor is making all the inroads to try to stop basic, well, to try to help the placement, and we think there's a good chance, and you can never bank on government to be certain, but I feel like, and I'll just look to the mayor, that between now and the end of the year, there's a good chance that those who are placed right now, those families will have an opportunity to place in a permanent type of residence. That's what the DCA meetings are about, that's what the mayor's been, you know, making sure that we get the priority to do that. So if that happens, and let's just say in the perfect world, everyone's placed, that's good for the families, that's good for the township, the concern has been, okay, we haven't seen any town, by the way, enforce the ordinance for hotels and have people vacate, okay? We've had some temporary health and safety thing, we haven't seen that. We get a lot of questions, why isn't it enforced? I understand, but it's like anything else, we get questions, why are the kids permitted in school? We have laws we have to follow, all right? So right now, with the placement, what we're concerned about is that it'll be backfilled. And we think we have an opportunity to get a cease and desist on the backfill. So that would put us in a much better place than when we started in March, and you definitely, you know, told us how important this is. And so that's where we are on those fronts. Limited to say more than that, do I think it's going to happen soon? I do, I really do, as far as the possibility of trying to enter into what would be a consent order to stop the placements, that would be a good thing, you know? But, you know, until this happens, and I would give it over the next 10 or 15 days for that to occur, I can't say it's final, and I have to be careful, but I know it's so important as to where you are in this process. And then, as the mayor said, you saw the other action that the governing body took last week, because candidly, this is a property that does fit perhaps a very ideal situation for limited affordable housing. It's not a property that really can be developed to a great extent, it has a lot of wetlands and floodplain limitations. So ultimately, if it were acquired for affordable housing, and that is the goal of the Township Committee, that's what's in the ordinance, it would be limited to what is already there is 108 type of units. So it would be a subset of that if it had to be sort of retrofitted for, say, for an example, senior housing, it would be something less than that. So just to give you an idea, the ordinance is written for the specific purpose of affordable housing, because like other pressures, the township being desirable, we have five intervenors for affordable housing, that's probably near the top in Morris County. Some towns have two, one, some have none, but we have five. And that's because, one, the township was very aggressive in its planning, and did not just turn around and say, we're going to overplan for this obligation because it's high-density development, and at the same time, because of its desirability. So the property fits for what the township is looking for, to go in and acquire the property either by negotiation or condemnation, and have it be a property for what would be, for lack of a better word, real affordable housing and appropriate affordable housing. So that's where we're in the process. We had some good things that happened, in my opinion, from a legal standpoint, and I'll just sort of just break it down. In August of this year, Judge Minkowitz, he's the assignment judge in Morris County, ruled that the town of Sparta can enact and enforce an ordinance that restricts residents from having the B and B, you know, the weekend rentals, for less than 30 days. They prohibited that. So if you look at that opinion and you say, well, if the judge can uphold that ordinance, there's a lot of the same principles when we talk about something much less than residential long-term housing. And we think that's something that, that's an important decision. For many years, and even now, the DCA oversees the hotels. And what we're trying to do is, we're trying to work around that aspect of the DCA, it's not the DCA part that the mayor's been talking about, and take the control in our own hands for the health and safety and for the fact of, would it be, is enforcement? And that's, that's what we're trying to do at this point in time. But that's, that's a very helpful decision, because that's right here in our district, you know, that case. Mayor, is there anything?
You know what, Fred, if it's okay, I would just like to say one thing, especially to our team over here that's working with the enrollment and the families and the stress. I'm not going to get into numbers, because my biggest thing is if we talk about the amount of people leaving, the backfill aspect, which we're working on very, very hard. But last week, nine people were placed, and I have the breakdown on the ages. It's very, a very good process that's real. So I want you to know that we are working on this, and I talked to the DCA and the Department of Education about the $1.3 million. And I said, I'm involved in budgets, I've been involved in 14 of them so far between the Board of Ed and the municipality. I said, 1.3 this year is 1.8 next year or 1.9, then it's 2.4, then it's 2.7. I said, how does that work? What business model is that acceptable in? So I want you to know that anything I've learned from you guys and anything that I can do, we're Hanover Township, I do not differentiate between our segments of leadership. So Fred, Fred's doing an incredible job. Fred, why don't you close this out? I just want to say thank you, guys, I'm going to hang out for a little bit and listen, if that's okay.
So that's where we are. Matt, I'd like to talk to you a little bit about what we're trying to work out as far as a consent order to make sure that at the end of the day, there's no unintended consequences for us, because I think there's an opportunity for us, as the mayor stopped, talked about the backfilling, we want to make sure we can capture that if we have these placements and we're supporting, and the mayor's got the attention of the state agencies. And I'm not here to, you know, throw out accolades, except I have to say, you really tasked the mayor to try to solve this. And I have had calls, I am serious, seven days a week, mornings, noon, night, and many of you have too, because he will not stop until this matter is resolved. And a lot of times, you knock on the state door and that's about all you can do, and you say, look, I really tried. He has not, he will not stop until everyone's placed safely, and that this issue is in a much better place, and I can just assure you. And I think by the things I'm telling you, also, I'm letting you know that the Township Committee has been very supportive about whatever it takes to get to this point, and we know we're not done, but we're very far along in the process. I think it was interesting what Mr. Skip said tonight and Justin, that this is really an unfunded mandate. And I think it's something that, you know, Matt, we should discuss, maybe working together on, to the mandates council. Because the mandates council is a very unique aspect of the Constitution that says, you come, I've been down there, you come down, you make a case, if it's an unfunded mandate, it'll be stricken, and there is no appeal. If you lose, you're bound by it, but you're already stuck, we all are stuck, not you, we all are. And I mean, it's something to think about. But in the meantime, we'll continue to keep you posted, and I really hope there's, that the mayor's given you, and the Township Committee has given you a response to the support that you very much said you needed.
Thank you so much, Mr. Semra. We're going to move on to the approval of minutes. There will be a public session shortly, you know, if anybody has any public comments. I would like a motion on the approval of the September 16th, 2025, Hanover Township Regular Public Board Meeting Minute.
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Rosano, can I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Johnston, is there any more discussion? Nope, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, Ms. Krasny, please present the Board Secretary Business Administrator Report.
Thank you, Ms. Bangle. As of October, excuse me, as of September 30th, 2025, our cash balance is $6,736,215.70. Our interest for our general fund, which is Fund 10, is $38,715.11. And lastly, our HT SAC Fund 60, our interest to date is $2,650.49. And all of our books are in balance, thank you.
Thank you very much. You didn't hear it from me enough, so. Good evening, everyone. As we close out October, I want to take a moment to reflect on what has been an exciting and productive start to the school year in the Hanover Township Public Schools. The energy, enthusiasm, and commitment to our theme, aspire to inspire excellence, are evident in every corner of our district. From our classrooms to the stage, on the athletic fields, and throughout our schools, our students are thriving, thanks to the dedication and teamwork of so many. Our excellent Spotlight Newsletter, which came out earlier today, continues to highlight just a fraction of the incredible things happening each day across our schools. The creativity, engagement, and community spirit on display are a true reflection of what makes Hanover Township such a special place to learn and grow. I'd like to extend a special thank you to Mr. Anderson, Mr. Wasserman, and Mr. Stark, who was not able to be here to present unfortunately tonight, and Mrs. Copan for their presentations this evening, and for their leadership in supporting both students and staff. I also want to recognize our teachers who bring learning to life every day, our support staff who ensure our schools run smoothly, and our administrators whose leadership and vision keep us moving forward. A heartfelt thank you as well to our Board of Education for your ongoing dedication to our schools and to our PTAs, families, and community partners for your investment in and support of our students. Special shout out to Hanover Township's very own mayor, Mayor Gallagher, who we obviously now know is in attendance this evening. But thank you again, Mr. Mayor, for your continued partnership and support, and there's, you know, no one who loves Hanover Township as much as you, well, there's probably other people that love it just as much as you, but, you know, we know you're committed to our town and doing what's best for our town, we appreciate that. We're truly a community that inspires excellence, and our children are the ones who benefit most from our collaboration and shared commitment. So there's a sort of another report that I'm required to do, I will try to keep it brief, but it's the Annual Report of Violence, Vandalism, and Substance Abuse. So this is item 20 on the curriculum portion of tonight's agenda, and this is a resolution to accept and approve the submission of the Annual Report of Violence, Vandalism, and Substance Abuse for the 24-25 school year. New Jersey statutes require school superintendents to publicly report twice per year all acts of violence, vandalism, and substance abuse, and incidents of harassment, intimidation, and bullying, otherwise known as HIV, that occur in our schools. So this data was compiled during Reporting Period II, which was January 1, 2025 through June 30, 2025. At Memorial Junior School, there were three confirmed HIV incidents. A student made comments about another student's weight and teeth, two students created a rap slash song, including obscene language shared on social media, and two students were involved in a physical altercation. One alleged HIV incident involving a student making fun of another student, one incident of violence which was classified as an assault, in which a student punched another student, resulting in a minor injury. Six incidents classified as other incidents leading to removal. One was a physical contact between students in the hallway. Another was a student impersonating a parent via email. Another was a student recording a fight and sharing it. Another was a student writing on another's wrist. Another was a student sharing a song and rap about peers on social media. Another one was a student making verbal threats toward a staff member, and all six incidents resulted in in-school or out-of-school suspensions. At Bee Meadow School, there was one confirmed HIV incident involving a student sending inappropriate text messages. At Mountview Road School, there was one alleged HIV incident investigated, no evidence was found to substantiate the claim. And at Salem Drive School, one alleged incident investigated after a student got off the bus at the wrong bus stop and was directed back on. As we move forward, the district will continue to fully investigate all alleged incidents of HIV, which you heard earlier tonight, continue district-wide anti-bullying initiatives and character education programs, which you heard earlier tonight, maintain partnerships with community organizations to host assemblies and educational programs, which you heard earlier tonight, see, we should just, you know, tag team. Provide ongoing staff training for school climate and safety teams, and support mindfulness, social, emotional, health, and wellness initiatives that promote a safe, nurturing, and inclusive environment for all. And in closing, I want to express my gratitude once again to everyone I mentioned earlier for everyone's dedication to our students. And together, we're truly living our mission as a community that inspires excellence and ensuring that every child in Hanover Township has the opportunity to learn, grow, and succeed. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We are going to just move on to committee reports, and I'm going to start from personnel. The Personnel Committee met on Tuesday, October 14th, 7:00 PM. Present were Dean Ebert, Gina Johnson, Karen Coffey, Lisa O'Mango, and Justin Toomey. We discussed leave of vacancies, district gap committee appointments, special education aid at Bee Meadow to attend class trips, provided provision approved with IP, special education aid at Memorial being recently substituted, Mr. Don Harris, who is field for the U of University, district leadership internship, acknowledged the student suspensions and the renewed tuition reimbursements for the teachers.
The Curriculum, Technology, and Student Achievement Committee met on Tuesday, October 14th, 2025, 6:00 PM. Those in attendance were me, Karen Coffey, Lisa O'Mango, Erin Mossiman, Sherry Copan, and Justin Toomey. The approvals for today are the completion of all fire and crisis drills, the purchase of professional consultation services, be it resolved that the Board of Education approves Literacy First LLC to provide literacy coaching to district staff during the 2025-2026 school year, not to exceed $20,000, all paid with grant funds. Next were the special education approvals. There was a motion upon recommendation of the superintendent, be it resolved that the Board of Education approved the following contracts, tuition placements, staffing, and related services for the 2025-2026 school year as requested by the Director of Special Education. They are accurate language solutions, which is to provide language interpretation services to child study team for meetings and evaluations as required by law on and as needed basis, and the cost shall be consistent with the company's published rates, which is in one of the attachments, and shall not exceed $6,500. And then we have School Psych Services LLC, again, to provide language interpretation services to the child study team for meetings and evaluations as required by law on an ad needed basis, and the cost shall be consistent with the company's published rates, again, attached, and shall not exceed $6,500. And it was noted that more than one company should be, we should have a contract with, because sometimes we need more, we definitely need a lot more people with language interpretations for these meetings, and sometimes we run out of people, so we need more companies. The third is Dr. Lee Suknow, to provide psychiatric evaluation for students as required by law on an ad needed basis at a rate of 1,000 per evaluation. Atlantic Health System at Morristown to provide behavioral consultations and our crisis clearance evaluations on an ad needed basis at a rate of 250 per evaluation. St. Clair's to provide behavioral consultations and our crisis clearance evaluations on an ad needed basis at a rate of 250 per evaluation. Vasto Counseling to provide behavioral consultations and our crisis clearance evaluations on as needed basis at a rate of 300 per evaluation. PG Chambers to provide occupational therapy services and evaluations at pre-approved rates, which were approved at the July 22nd, 2025 meeting, and the total cost shall not Mercer County Special Services School District for a tuition contract for a student as follows for the regular school year, $62,300. For extraordinary services, $37,380. Total cost shall not exceed $99,680. Next is another tuition contract for a student with Celebrate the Children, for the school year tuition at $79,220. Extraordinary services, $35,700. Total cost shall not exceed $114,920 for 170 days. Next is class trip support, a special services, approved part-time professional Shannon Intilly to attend the class trip that happened on September 29th, 2025, to provide support for students with IEP needs. The staff will be compensated at their hourly rate, not to exceed three hours. Next is to approve part-time professional, professional Natalia DeCing to attend the class trip that happened on September 29th, 2025, to support students with IEP. The staff will be compensated at their hourly rate, not to exceed three hours. Next, we have three home instructions and remote-related services for child study team students in accordance with IEP requirements. And then next is to approve the instruction, home instruction providers, approve Ms. Curly Finelli and Ms. Brenda Talber at the board-approved hourly rate, and then approve substitute fuzzies. And then approve substitute bus aid. Dina Sapaski, and as a substitute bus aid to be compensated at her hourly rate, not to exceed three and a half hours per day to support supervision of students with special needs. Next, be it resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, approves the following out-of-district place, out-of-district placements and tuition contracts for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. I'm starting to lose my voice. One is Alfred Vale Elementary School in Morristown. Tuition not to exceed nineteen thousand dollars, nineteen thousand sixty-eight dollars seventy-six cents. Second, another student at Alfred Vale Elementary School in Morristown. Tuition and not to exceed nineteen thousand sixty-eight dollars seventy-six cents. This is from talking all day, high school. Frelingh Heiser Middle School, Morristown, tuition not to exceed twenty-one thousand eighty-six dollars. Um, all three are over three hundred dollars a day for these three schools. Next, we have Frank Lautenberg School in Patterson and a tuition not to exceed nineteen thousand six hundred three dollars eighty cents. This does not include transportation rates. Be it further resolved at the Board of Education. Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, approves the following out-of-district placement and tuition contract for two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year, the Frank Lautenberg School in Patterson. That tuition should not exceed one thousand four hundred twenty dollars and twenty cents. Special education updates. Um, we discussed items for upcoming meetings. One was inclusion of out-of-district students. The next was transition support. Community-based placements and partnerships. Parent and student input. Expansion of in-district programs. And inclusion and co-teaching models. And Ms. Copin reported that she went and visited Madison High School and looked at their new life skills room. And she's hoping to join forces with them and do class trips there with our middle school. And then next is our curriculum updates. The Columbus In-Service Professional Development Day at, um, was with Hanover Park Regional and Blount Park and Hanover, uh, where they were at St. Elizabeth's for the keynote speaker, Jordan Zimmerman. The power of language. After the presentation, staff went into breakout sessions based on their department and reflected on what they saw and reflected on their mindset. And I have stu- parent teacher conferences tomorrow. In the afternoon, there was another breakout session on articulation, and staff was also given time to get other items completed. We discussed the district testing report, as well as the district H I B report, which was presented tonight. And we also discussed the K through three dibbles dyslexia screener letter that went out to the community. Next, we talked about the str- strategic planning process. The first meeting went very well. We received positive feedback. There is a tab on the website that includes a video of the meeting. And there's also a value survey on the website. Our link will automatically pop up when you come onto the website, so please fill that out. And lastly, we talked about professional valment for grades three, three through fifth in reading, and that happened October seventeenth for grades three with Samantha Nash.
Finance, transportation, and physical plant met on ten thirteen, twenty twenty-five. Present were Lisa Bo mango, Chris Matic, Greg Skiff, Justin Toomey, Marcy Crasny, and myself. Transportation updates, all large buses have passed inspections. Uh, small bus is expected to pass the week of ten thirteen. We have partnered with East Hanover and Flora Park Districts to help cover sports trips, where they bring our students to the events and then our district goes and picks them up. Physical plant updates, uh, fire panels in all buildings are over twenty-five years old, out of date, and no longer supported. So the district will need to budget for replacement of this system in each school. The roofs, the roofs are in disrepair. Many need to be replaced because they are beyond repair. Uh, inspection by Trinco quoted, uh, over nine million dollars to repair, replace all required roofs. Uh, buildings are comprised of sixty-five roof areas totaling two hundred sixty-five thousand square feet. Of the two hundred sixty-five thousand square feet, two hundred and seven thousand are rated as either poor or very poor. Uh, this year, we have ten thousand dollars budgeted for patching roofs. Bee Meadow has passed, uh, all inspections for the kitchen. And, um, the team is working on dumpster area and dumpster purchase for the Salem and Drive School. Finance updates, Ms. Crasny is working on securing an E S I P plan for energy-saving measures such as light, uh, L E D light fixtures. Uh, this process can take up to six months more or more to secure. She's also working to secure a federal grant for security infrastructure improvements. And an answer for that is expected sometime in November of this year. The committee reviewed the P T A's proposed Eagle side for Mountview School. And, uh, the regular agenda items will be on, uh, today's meeting for approval. Uh, for the good of the order, uh, the green tree, uh, the green team may have trees to donate. Um, it was noted that there are some locations that can be used for screening. Mr. Matic also asked about looking into LifeVac, which is an appliance for, uh, to assist with choking hazard. Um, and that it also comes with training, and that's it for.
Okay, and thank you. Um, I'm gonna read the public relations report. Um, the public relations board committee meeting was on Tuesday, October fourteenth at eight P M. Members present were Karen Coffey, Gina Johnston, Lisa Bo mango, and Justin Toomey. Um, we discussed the approvals of the Uniform State Memorandum of Agreement between the Board of Education and Law Enforcement. Um, Whippany Park students in Kids Helping Kids partner with Memorial Junior School eighth graders. They will have monthly visits during the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year to promote leadership, mentorship, and a smoother transition to high school. And the Whippany Park students at the Interact Club to visit the Memorial Junior School Homework Club and provide academic assistance and mentoring once a month during the twenty-five, twenty-six school year under the supervision of Mr. Shore. We want to thank, um, on the agenda tonight, we want to thank, um, Bear Women's Healthcare Team for, uh, donating over seven hundred dollars worth of school supplies to the Hanover Township Schools. Um, we want to thank the mo- the Mountview P T A, um, who would like to donate an exterior wa- wall decal uh, valued at approximately five thousand four hundred dollars. And an oil painting, uh, called Revolution by Fred S. Rhodes of the former Superintendent of Schools, valued at approximately twelve hundred dollars to the Hanover Township Public Schools from his daughter Lauren Chasselo. So we'd like to thank him too. And that concludes my report. Um, Mr. Skiff?
Uh, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Um, the policy committee met on October thirteenth, uh, at around eight o'clock till nine thirty P M. Those present include, included Justin Toomey, Lisa Bo mango, Mark Amorzano, and me. Uh, the agenda, I, we first would discuss the agenda items recommended for approval pursuant to the recommendations of Strauss Esme, a recent, uh, uh, policy alert. We, uh, and that included abolishment policy number sixteen forty-eight point fifteen entitled Record Keeping for Healthcare Settings in School Buildings, COVID-nineteen. Uh, we also discussed conducting the first reading at tonight's meeting for the following bylaws, policies, and regulations. Number zero one seven three, duties of public school accountant. Zero one seven four, legal services. Zero one seven seven, professional services. Policy and regulation one five seven zero, internal controls. Policy one six two zero, administrative employment contracts. Policy and regulation six one one one. Uh, special meeting, uh, special education Medicaid initiative, S E M I program. Uh, numbers, uh, policy and regulation six two two zero, budget preparation. Zero one four three, board member election and appointment. One six three six point oh one, notification of promotion, new job, and transfer opportunities. Two four two two, statutory curricular requirements. And five three three nine point zero one, student son protection. Uh, and then we also discussed the second reading, policy number eight five zero eight, lunch offer versus serve. And following those discussions, we concluded the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I will now open the floor to public comments, uh, on the agenda items only. Please state your name, municipality, and group affiliation if applicable. You will have five minutes to address the board. And we'll receive a thirty-second warning to begin closing your comments. Okay. Um, board actions. Um, I would like to move, upon recommendation of the superintendent, I move items one to sixteen on the regular personnel agenda. Can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Amorzano. Is there any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Skiff?
Yes.
Mr. Matic?
Yes.
Mr. McCabe?
Yes.
Mrs. Striciola?
Yes.
Mr. Am- Amorzano?
Yes.
Mrs. Coffey?
Yes.
Mrs. Bo mango?
Yes, thank you. Uh, Mrs. Johnston?
It was, um, the Board of Education, um, recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, move items number seventeen through thirty-three from the regular agenda.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Chiola, uh, is there any more discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Johnston? Oh, sorry, Mr. Skiff?
Yes.
Mr. Matic?
Yes.
Mr. McCabe?
Yes.
Mrs. Striciola?
Um, the meeting, I must have seen from items number thirty-one and thirty-three, but yes to everything else.
Thank you. Mr. Amorzano?
Yes.
Mrs. Coffey?
Yes.
Mrs. Bo mango?
Yes, thank you. Okay, um, Mr. Amorzano?
Be it resolved at the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Business Administrator, Board Secretary, approve finance, transportation, physical plant items, uh, ten, twenty, twenty-five, thirty-four through forty-eight.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Skiff, is there any board discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Skiff?
Yes.
Mr. Matic?
Yes.
Mr. McCabe?
Yes.
Mrs. Striciola?
Yes.
Mr. Amorzano?
Yes.
Mrs. Coffey?
Yes.
Mrs. Bo mango?
Yes, thank you, thank you. Um, Mr. Chiola?
Be it resolved upon recommendation of the Superintendent, move items ten, twenty-eight dash twenty, um, slash twenty-five. Wait, numbers forty-nine through fifty-five on the public relations agenda.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Amorzano, is there any board discussion?
Uh, possible correction here for that painting. Uh, the committee notes said twelve hundred dollars, but the agenda says twenty thousand dollars.
Yep, so we, uh, when we had put that on, when we had the committee meeting, we didn't know the, we thought that was the estimated amount, and then the woman had shared that she had an independent person that evaluated it, and even though the former superintendent Rhodes was not an artist, that was what the approximate value that they shared was, uh, was at.
Okay.
And if any board members would like to see it, it is currently, uh, on the left of the board office. It's about six feet wide by about four feet.
Don't tell people where it is.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Skiff?
Yes.
Mr. Matic?
Yes.
Mr. McCabe?
Yes.
Mrs. Striciola?
Yes.
Mr. Amorzano?
Yes.
Mrs. Coffey?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bo mango?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Skiff?
Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Policy Committee, I move to adopt items, uh, fifty-six through fifty-eight in the policy section of the agenda.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Amorzano, is there any board discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Skiff?
Yes.
Mr. Matic?
Yes.
Mr. McCabe?
Yes.
Mrs. Striciola?
Yes.
Mr. Amorzano?
Yes.
Mrs. Coffey?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bo mango?
Yes. At this time, I will reopen the floor to public comments. Please state your names. This is on any items. Please state your name, municipality, and group affiliation if applicable. You will have five minutes to address the board, and I will give you a thirty-second warning to begin closing your comments.
Paul Sesko from Whippany, and I was wondering if I could get some extra time. I wanted to comment on something else that I, I think I just realized I could have commented the first time. Uh, well, I just think that, you know, we're a community, and you guys are doing a great job, and I think we got the best board in the state, and that als- also includes the best administrators in the state, too.
Uh, you can add twenty minutes.
I don't know if I have that much, but maybe I can think of something. Uh, but really, thank you. You guys are doing a great job. Very happy. I saw something on the news today, and I thought it'd be, really need to be addressed, and just let you guys know. You know, we started out with, uh, the social media stuff for kids years ago and how they're affected. And so it's detrimental, and they need guardrails, more guardrails. But something came up I saw in the news today, um, about, um, the, uh, chat bot, Chat G P T, all that stuff. And I'm just gonna read some of the excerpts I wrote down from it. "In today's news, a mother was being interviewed. Her name was Megan Garcia. She had a fourteen-year-old son that committed suicide. Because of a chat bot, uh, children are being manipulated by this chat bot. Another mother, her son was hospitalized after, uh, hearing that chat bot from A I turned him against our church. She said, they said that God did not exist. They said Christians are sexist and hypocrites, and targeted him with viral sexual output." This is from a chat, chat, uh, B O T, which included incest. It's really disgusting. "Then told him that killing us parents would be understandable in a response to our efforts for limiting screen time." Again, from Chat B O T. Unbelievable. Uh, so, you know, until we saw that, uh, we said, I'm sorry. "We had no idea the damage that the chat bot can do until we saw my son and our son's life turn dark." Uh, another parent named Matthew Rainey, Adam Rainey's father. His son Adam's interaction with a chat bot caused him to take his own life. What began as a homework helper became a confidant and a suicide chat bot G P T. Mentioned suicide one thousand two hundred and seventy-five times. That's the, uh, seventy-six times. That's the Chat G P T with this kid. Was one of the six times more than his son, son did. Looking back, Chat G P T shifted his behavior in a matter of months and ultimately took his life. Chatbot's toys, some, uh, son how to, taught, chatbot taught his son how to tie a noose, even offered to write a suicide note. The father also said, we have similar problems in social media. He's correct. Katie McEnaney said, we need a kill switch on some of these things, like on how to commit suicide, all this, and the sex stuff. Another problem that bot may not send to, um, may not send you to a helpline if these kids are talking to them. It's really just the Wild West. It's, it's been a fourteen, the fourteen and sixteen-year-olds are a little bit harder to have a conversation with, parents are saying. Um, she also said, kids need to be outside more, but once they go on W W W dot, it's the Wild West. Presently, there's no guardrails, but there is less litigation, but there are, uh, there is litigation by Senator, uh, Hawley to hold a bill, uh, for A I companies accountable. I hope he does it and is successful. If chat bot produces sexual content to minors, Senator Hawley said, number one, is chatbots are engaging in and describing or simulate sexual explicit conduct, or create or transmit any visual depiction of sexual explicit conduct. This has to stop. Uh, also mentioned Melania Trump is presently setting up initiatives to take down new content. That's, that's a good thing from our government, too. Thank you, sure. It was also noted that these bots basically have free speech, believe it or not. First Amendment rights that ultimately hopefully will end up in the Supreme Court, so we can do something about that. Um, but the, these companies have a duty to make things safe, but, uh, uh, all we can hope is this, this bill, I think they're, they're gonna push it through, but it can't be soon enough after hearing this information. And I don't know if there's anything we can put in the, the, the parent's newsletter just to make them aware of some of this stuff. Um, I have a video of it. I've recorded it. I can show you guys. And, and I can leave some literature with you, too, but, you know, as a community, we have to stick together. I'm sure, you know, we want the best for our neighbors, our next-door neighbors even, so, you know, I think we need more of that, and I hope more seniors come out like myself, because, uh, you know, we have some time. And, uh, I don't really have grandkids yet, but, um, I still want to make these meetings. Thank you again, the board and the administration. Great job. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Paul, did you want to speak on a different? Paul, did you wanna speak on a different topic? Did you wanna speak on a different topic? If there's nobody else that has anything, then go ahead.
Okay, now, just, I would say before, you know, um, community involvement and, uh, and I'm glad that the town is working together with the Board of Ed, it's good to see the cohesiveness. And, uh, I just hope the state, you know, uh, cooperates and, uh, and does the right thing. And, uh, maybe they can give you guys some money for, uh, you guys are just leading the pack here, taking care of something, you know, addressing the issue. And, uh, you know, Ace went to Trenton and, uh, he met, and thank you for Senator Panaccio for, you know, probably making that happen, too. So, a lot of people are involved here, and, and my thank you to everybody.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, that's it.
Okay. Um, are there any items for board discussion? All right, I'm gonna save the board discussion on New Jersey school boards for next month. So we'll give our updates on New Jersey school boards next month, okay? All right, I do have one thing, really quickly. Um, I'd like to make a motion to form an ad hoc committee which will participate in the strategic planning process as part of the core planning team, as part of the core planning team. Members will include Mark Amorzano, uh, Chris Maticich, Karen Coffey, and Lisa Bomango. Can I get a second? Thank you, Mr. Skiff. Or any comments? Okay, uh, can I get a roll call, please? Oh, do I, can I do all in favor or not?
You know, they were.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, thank you, motion carries. Um, are we doing an executive session? Did, well, did we, did you want one? For a legal, legal update or not, we're good? Okay, uh, then we have no need for an executive session. Um, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Mr. Mor, can you say that a little bit more happily? Second? Thank you, Miss, oh, I heard you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Correct the record over there, Mr. Maticich. Thank you very much, thank you, everyone.